You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting for January the 26th. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Board of Education. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting back to order and we will follow the agenda as written and we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance and we will remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Tonight, we are all saddened by the loss of our great friend Vic Johnson. We pray tonight for the family of our fellow board member. Mr. Vic Johnson and all those who loved him, and there were so many. At this time of great sadness, we ask for comfort and your presence of peace. We are all blessed to have had Vic on our school board and his sincere care and love for all of our kids. Please give guidance and wisdom to this board tonight. Amen.
Amen.
As many of you know, last week, our district, our board, and our entire community lost an integral part leader, teacher, and role model unlike any other. Mr. Vic Johnson passed away and tonight, on behalf of our Board of Education, all of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' family, we would like to honor and remember him. Mr. Johnson was a member of this board for more than 20 years. A lot of us here tonight worked with and learned from Mr. Johnson. For me, he was a teacher, an administrator, an advocate, mentor, and friend. And I'll clarify that he didn't teach me from the standpoint of I was a student in his class, but he was my principal at Carver High School, but he taught me in the most authentic way as a teacher and a student just about life and being a part of this community. So I wanted to make sure I made that distinction. As a board member, he's supported students, he stood alongside teachers, and did everything he could to make public education in our district the best it could be for all students. His time on this board is only part of his story. He served the school district as a teacher and administrator long before he began serving it as a member of the Board of Education. He retired from our district in 1993. At that time, he was an assistant principal at Carver High School. I graduated in 1992, so you see, we came together then. Mr. Johnson was appointed to the Board of Education in March 1997 and was elected to the board in 1998. He told people, "As a product of this city and school system, it is my obligation to serve and give back to a system that has done so much good for me and my family when it comes to education. I continue to serve because I feel I still have valuable input to offer that makes a difference in the lives of students and others impacted by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools." Mr. Johnson was born right here in Winston-Salem, so was I. His parents were factory workers. His father worked for R.J. Reynolds Tobacco Company, so was my family members. Both were very religious people. Johnson had five brothers and one sister. Six of them graduated from college. Growing up, Mr. Johnson often said he wanted to be a football player, and he was. He played at Atkins High School for two years, went to the U.S. Army for four years, and went to the U.S. Army and then went to Winston-Salem State for four years. He graduated from Winston-Salem State with a bachelor's degree in education and later earned a master's degree in education and administration from North Carolina ENT State University. So did I. He began his teaching career at Reevesville City Schools and in 1962 went to Paisley Junior High as a math teacher. He became the assistant principal at North Forsyth High School in 1973. He became the assistant principal at, I'm sorry, he went to Carver High School as an assistant principal in 1984 and served there until he retired. After retiring, he served as interim principal at North Forsyth High School in 1996. As a member of the Board of Education, Mr. Johnson has served on the Builders and Grounds Committee, the Curriculum Committee, and a number of principal-selected committees. He loved students and hosted a student golf tournament. He mentored students one-on-one and even visited elementary schools, helping students learn things like how to tie a tie. He believed in his work and he believed in equality for every student and every person. On February 23rd, 1960, Mr. Johnson joined a group of 22 black and white students from Winston-Salem Teachers College, now Winston-Salem State University, and Wake Forest College, now Wake Forest University to sit down at the lunch counter at Woolsworth. He was part of a desegregation movement that spread across the South, eventually making Winston-Salem the first southern city to voluntarily desegregate its lunch counters. There are few people like Mr. Johnson. This community is a better place because of his work fighting for basic human rights, fighting for our students. Our district has lost a true leader and friend. What I will say before we have our video tribute definitively from the heart is, the seat that I sit in tonight is the seat of Mr. Johnson. He paved the way for me to sit in that seat, and I'm not talking about from a hypothetical. From the time he heard that I wanted to be on the school board, he made sure that he would campaign with me every step of the way. When I lost the first time, "We'll get it next time." I lost the second time, "Don't give up." And he was there at the third time, encouraging me, being with me. As I sit in the audience, I see Mr. Alex Bohannon, who he also helped to try to get on this board. I tried to give him a little money with Mr. Johnson, you know, it cost a run, "Put that money away. I got this." He put me on his back and rolled me into that seat. And I want this community to know that he is a real man of faith, of God, of family, and he is a model not only for his family and his children immediately, but for every child, black, white, brown, in this community. And it is with my honor tonight that, on behalf of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education and our interim superintendent Trish McManus, that we honor his life and his family is here tonight, and after the video, they will come up and receive recognition. Thank you.
19, in 2000, George Williamson. He came over to be with us. We were celebrating it. He was one. As Donald Bradley, he was from Jersey, he was, he's John's. I was born black, poor, and a male, a fault-malnutritioned, inferior schools in a really racist land. But I'd still have one more hurdle to cross before I can be a man.
I always felt that I always had one more hurdle to cross. That's always been my motto. Just as a man, you still got one more hurdle to cross. You need to be reaching back, pulling some other black kid across that hurdle. We're a civil minority and we got to make sure that we safeguard ourselves.
And I was treated better in service than I was treated at my own home, you know? So they right here, they got these colored water fountains, they got colored bathrooms, and you can't eat the lunch counters. You know, that was really depressing, and I just left here, but you could do most of the things that you want to do that we're doing now.
And able to be the oldest child in my family, we have a family of seven, and six of us graduated from college. I just believe that some things you got to do because you are a minority, you know? You know, when my daddy was at the house, and he said, "Boy, did you hear your mama?" It wasn't anything else to talk about.
I was told that if I played sports, got an education in the job, kept a respectable name, that I would someday be a man. But I soon found out that I still have one more hurdle to cross before I can be a man.
My freshman year, it was my freshman year, I must have made about seven or eight titles, you know, solo titles. And when I came off the field coming back to the clubhouse, that's when the coaches started calling me, "Vicious V." I said, "Lord, I do not want to discount anything that our black women have done. I know that there are countless boys who look up to me. They want me to be leading instead of pleading."
You can feel a certain way, but you don't jeopardize your livelihood on something that is going to hurt you, you know?
Lord, keep me in your sight, your plan, because I still know that as a black man, I will always have one more hurdle to cross before I can reach the promised land. And little black boys and girls will try tomorrow after me, why? Because I have really tried to be a man.
To the Johnson family, again, on behalf of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, our interim, we would like to present you with this plaque. And to let you know that your father means the world to us now, always and forever. We love him and we love you. Please let us know what we can do and help the family with this plaque. I think Gerald Johnson, his son is going to come up, and you would like to say a few words, um, that you owe him.
First of all, giving honor to God, just want to say thank you to the school board. My dad, you knew what this board meant to him in terms of what he can do for education. One of the things that my dad believed in was brevity. Every time I would go to a funeral with him, he would say, "Son, you know, the person has already lived their life. We don't need to put the family through a whole lot of long stuff." And we weren't made to be here always. So he lived with that. So everybody that's on the program for his celebration of life on Friday, I say it, "You got two minutes. And if I stand up, that means you need to sit down." And my mom said, "You're just like your dad." So on behalf of our family, I'm going to keep it very, very short, is that we're honored and we're grateful that you would take this time to recognize my father. While he is gone to heaven, he will always be here. I can't tell you the number of calls that we've gotten this weekend. Guys I grew up with, one told me, said, "You know, your dad saved my life. Saved my life. Kept me from being expelled from school, put me on the right path." And it's those type of things that you all are responsible for now, and make sure that you continue to do that. God bless and thank you so much.
Oh, the plaque, the night tag, I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone, again, as we complete the tribute to Mr. Johnson and his family. We do have another recognition for National School Counselors Week. We want to take the time definitely now, because now more than ever, school counselors are working hard to support students, families, and our school communities as we continue in an unprecedented time. School counselors are called on to collaborate in addressing concerns, losses, crisis, and educational needs. The special week honoring school counselors provide us the opportunity to acknowledge our school counselors who implement comprehensive school counseling programs, which is an essential part of the educational process for all students as they meet the challenges of the 21st century. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools recognize school counselors for their hard work and unique contributions in working with students to remove barriers to learning by addressing students' academic concerns, post-secondary options, and social-emotional skills. So we want to, again, on behalf of the board, thank all of our school counselors for the amazing job that they're doing. What I would ask, because I would like to give the Johnson family time to leave, if you would like to, because I know you didn't anticipate standing for a board meeting, but once again, thank you for your time to come and help us to recognize your father, and we will wait for you to transition if you would like to leave, but you're more than welcome to stay here, if you would like.
I forgot to mention that the services will be eleven o'clock on this Friday and it will be on Russell's funeral on Facebook.
Okay, so the funeral arrangements will be held by Russell's Funeral Home, 11:00 a.m. on this Friday. You can tune in virtually through Facebook. As you can imagine, you know, the family has already received its guest members to go, I'm sure, live, so just be mindful that I know all of us would like to be present at Mr. Johnson's funeral, but of course, out of respect to the, you know, limitations of what we, how we exist now in COVID, the family is asking that you join through Facebook to show your appreciation for Mr. Johnson. If you want to send any flowers or anything to the family, I would suggest you reach out to Russell's Funeral Home and they can definitely contact the family on your behalf.
No flowers, we got sponsored center over at Winston-Salem State University.
Okay, thank you. Okay, absolutely. So again, the family just want to say that their preference is to give to a scholarship on behalf of Mr. Johnson through Winston-Salem State University. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the agenda review. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second. If there are no further questions or discussion, let it be known, consensus by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I see, Board Member Bremer, you have your hand up. Thank you. The next item is the public comments on the agenda items. Please note that this time is reserved for items only, to be discussed only on our agenda for tonight. We ask that you are very mindful that we will not respond back to you at this time, but if there is the need to get you some information immediately, someone on staff will communicate with you. We ask that you be mindful of any sensitive issues that relate to personnel or any of our students. We also ask that you are very kind and considerate in your comments. Please know that you will be directing all comments to the chair, and I think I said you will have three minutes to make your comments. The first person on the agenda for tonight is Shanette Lewis. Did I pronounce your first name?
Shanette, but tomato, tomato.
Shanette, okay. Oh, I listen, I'm Maliche, but everybody calls me Malachay, Malachi, anything.
Right, so you should know. Okay, so, good evening, members of the board, interim superintendent McManus. My name is Shanette Lewis, and I'm a proud kindergarten teacher at Cook Literacy Model School. I've been at Cook for a little over three years, and Dr. Wilkins is going to be talking about the work with OG. I know firsthand what impact that has on our students, and so I hope that you guys will give us the green light to move forward with our work with OG. But just a couple of little notes. One, OG helps meet the individual needs of each student. It also has a multi-sensory approach, which right now, you know, is very critical. There's so many things due to the pandemic that we can't do. This is something tried and true that we can do. I'd love to kind of go full circle with that. And then also, it promotes consistency with our teaching strategies across grade levels, so looking forward to continuing that work. And then also, through OG, we have a host of support and resources in place, where not only would you be setting us up for success, you'd be setting our students up for success as well. So I hope we get the green light to continue the great work we do at CLGS. And I did not go over my time, so I'm doing good.
Thank you. That's what teachers do. The next person we have is Michelle Hopkins. Board Member Jones, do you see my cellphone at the podium?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Cook. I, this is my third year of implementing OG, and I believe I had this experience today so I could share it with you. I was reading with a fourth-grade student about a book about apples. He read the word "sitter." The word was cider. I stopped him and we talked about it, and I said, "You segmented that word right. What do you know about syllables?" And he said, "That's an open syllable." Okay, what does the vowel do when you have an open syllable? It says its name. Read that word again. Cider. He was successful because of the implementation of OG. I couldn't just ask him to pronounce the two sounds of "I" and then ask him, "Does that sound like a word you know?" He does not know the word cider. But this gave him a system and a process that he can use to access language. Next page, the word was ripe. He read it, rip. Again, we talked about the syllables. What do you see? Oh, it's a magic E syllable. What does that make the vowel do? Oh, it says its name, ripe. Now, after we've conquered the syllables and the decoding, now I can do my fourth-grade work. Now we went back and we said, "Let's figure out what these words mean." He read back through the text and found out that an apple is growing through the summer and it's ripe in the fall. What do you think that word means? He could tell me, "Oh, it's done. It's done growing." Then we had a discussion about our favorite kind of bananas and what ripe really means. OG helps unlock in a systematic way so my students can access vocabulary that they might not know. I ask you, as the board, you give my colleagues the same training I have had so we can continue the success for our scholars by accessing text that helps them grow systematically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Val Young.
Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury, Board members, interim superintendent McManus. The LCAE, the Forsyth County Association of Educators, believe in being data-driven and data-informed. LCAE endorsed Alex Bohannon as he ran for school board on seat in 2018. He received the third highest votes among the candidates running for the school board from the voters of Forsyth County. Forward to 2020, Barbara Burksley became available, so LCAE went back to our data and once again, we chose Alex Bohannon to fill this vacancy. Alex is a product of our school system. He has been committed to our school by participating on committees and attending school board meetings. We find that he is engaged in what we do to support our students. I know that you have the last say-so on who fills the seat, but we choose to support Alex Bohannon as the candidate for this vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alfred Harvey.
Good afternoon to this distinguished board, interim superintendent. I came here tonight to talk about a plethora of things, but first I want to pay homage to a great man, Victor Johnson, who went in the Winston-Salem State Hall of Fame under my guidance as the chair of that Hall of Fame committee in 2003. Vic was also a member of the Atkins High School Hall of Fame, so those things are overlooked by the speaker. But I want to talk tonight about integrity, character, and what it really means. And what it really means. Because it was brought to my attention today that you may have a person that you may be voting on who doesn't even live in the district. I didn't get a chance to be voted on because I didn't live in the district. But I'm going to call out some numbers. Thirty-eight seventy-three, thirty-two sixty-six. They mean nothing to you, but to me, as I visited a relative today and we got to talking, he said, "Oh, they live down the street. They used to." Used to, what do you mean? So I go there and I look at the house. Nobody can live in that house because that house burned down. Well, they moved out there on Reno or Robin Hood Road, so I go there, nobody living there. So I'm saying to you, before you make these hard-fast rules that you live by right now, make sure that you're choosing somebody with character to represent and teach our kids, because that's what I taught my three daughters. You got to have character, you got to have poise as a woman, and you got to be sure yourself. That's why MBA, PhD, and Juris Doctor degree came out of my house. Now, if you're going to let anybody just walk on this board and not check their character, I'm trying to figure out what kind of board do we have? Thank you, and this is the first time I finish under three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, and I will say that those items were not overlooked. You just taught us something about, at least for myself, about Mr. Johnson that, and I thank you for sharing that information that I didn't know about Mr. Johnson, so thank you for letting us know.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir. Lastly, we have Jenny Easter.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to speak to you tonight about Ms. Burke's position on the school board. While I'm still trying to figure out why there isn't a specially-appointed position reserved specifically for an educator in the school board, in the school district, on our school board, I do ask that you consider electing an individual that our teacher union endorses or someone who actually taught in our system. Burke's position was important to us educators because it was one of the three voices we felt we still had left. There was once a time we educators rallied to get most of you ladies elected, and then there was another time where you rallied with us and rallied for our students. Many of us knew we could call you and you had our back. You trusted us to do our jobs. That loss of respect has been dwindling since Emery left as superintendent, but it was made even more apparent this year. Several of you have stated many times, "I'm not an educator, so I'll trust the superintendent." But with all due respect, a principal is more of a direct- But with all due respect, a principal is more of a direct line to educators in communication to the work going on in schools. And honestly, when you are presented with something at the school board, are you really seeing the best or the worst? Burke wasn't just a principal, she was a principal that served in the system. She tried numerous times to tell you what us teachers would be dealing with, yet you refused to listen to her. We all heard your huffs on the microphones when we, when she wanted to ask other questions that you obviously thought were unimportant. Even now, I can't tell you how many times you've said, I'm not a medical professional, how could I make these decisions? Yet you have Mott Singer on your board, you demean her voice as an educated PDA in our community. Someone who might not have the doctor title, but let's be honest, is pretty much a doctor. We need someone to fill this position who won't say, these decisions are hard, sit in our seat, when we are, when presented with legitimate concerns from employees. We are on the front lines of these children's lives and we know what's going on, we have told you everything. You still act like you are so unsure of what's going on. It really shocks me when it comes to our children, especially last week. Ms. Crowley, when your lack of confidence in our abilities, with your lack of confidence in our abilities and your lack of faith in our children's success in life. I felt utterly disrespected as an educator when you made this statement last week, that these children will be stuck in a minimum, minimum wage job because of remote learning. I'm the oldest of six children I helped raise from a broken home. I'm the only one that got a college degree and a master's, and yet my siblings probably make the same amount as me. We need someone that's not gonna pass the buck off to someone else.
Thank you, Ms. Easter, I appreciate you. Our next item on the agenda is discussion items, the first item is the Bridges Collaborative presentation by Mr. Stefan Laliger. I think I'm pronouncing his name correctly, who is the fellows director of the Bridges Collaborative. Okay, Miss, I think Mrs. McMillan, our Equity and Diversity Officer, Executive Director, is going to formally introduce Mr. Laliger.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Superintendent Ms. McManus, and other board members. I am going to introduce to you Dr. Stefan Laliger, who is a fellow at the Century Foundation and the director of the Bridges Collaborative. He previously worked as a special assistant to the chancellor of the New York City Department of Education and as a teacher and principal of a K-8 school in New Orleans, Louisiana. And with that, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Dr. Laliger.
Thank you so much, Ms. McMillan, thank you, Board Chair Woodbury, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to, to talk with you all today. Uh, and one thing that Ms. McMillan did not mention is that I'm, I'm a fellow North Carolina kid, I, I grew up right down the road, uh, and went to Chapel Hill Carrow Public Schools, and so, um, excited to be here with you all today. I'm here to talk to you about the Bridges Collaborative, which is a national collaborative uh, that focuses on diversity and integration strategies in school, in schools and in housing. Uh, and I'm here to talk to you about this today because we have been engaging with a small team uh, of individuals from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Public Schools and, um, and I wanna tell you a little bit about what it is that we do. Uh, and I'll keep my presentation short and, and will be happy to entertain questions at the end. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, these are the questions I'm hoping to address with you today, uh, just to talk to you a little bit about why we are in existence, what it is that we do, uh, what our approach to the work is, and who we work with. We work with small teams from across the country, um, small teams from school districts and from housing organizations. And then I wanted to share just a little bit of an insight into, uh, one of the topics that we talk a lot about at the collaborative, which is student assignment and policies that have been happening all across the country, innovative policies that are cropping up across the country. Uh, next slide, please. So what is it, the, what is the problem that we are attempting to solve as the Bridges Collaborative? Uh, next slide. The first, uh, problem that we recognize that, uh, I, I know, um, folks on this board are attuned to and also believe is a, is a big problem, we're looking at national statistics here, and that is the disproportionate outcomes for, um, Black and Hispanic students across the country. You're looking at fourth grade NAEP scores, and if I were to show you eighth grade scores, uh, or twelfth grade scores, they would show a similar story. And that is, for the last few decades, we have seen, um, a, an unacceptable, quite frankly, an unacceptable gap in the achievement, um, of, uh, our African-American students and Hispanic students in relation to white students in this country. And this is a trend that exists all across the country, next slide, please. One of the things, uh, that is well-known at this point is that there is a strong correlation between academic outcomes and socioeconomic disparities. And so what this graph shows is that in places where there is a bigger socioeconomic disparity between, um, African-Americans and white folks, uh, there's also a bigger, um, achievement gap between Black students and white students. And so this is a correlation that holds, uh, true, uh, across districts across the United States. Next slide. At the same time that we have seen these stubbornly persistent achievement gaps, we have also seen an increase in racial and economic segregation across the United States. Uh, and, and again, um, this is a trend that we've seen nationally, but is also a trend that is true uh, of the schools in Winston, Winston-Salem Forsyth County. And so nationally, the statistics are that we have about one-fifth of our schools in the country where greater than ninety percent of the student population is, is either Black or Latino. And we have another one-fifth of American schools where greater than ninety percent of the student body is white. And that is in 2021, this is today, current statistics. Uh, and we know that, for instance, in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, there are sixteen schools, um, that fit that bill. They're either greater than ninety percent white, or they're greater than ninety percent Black and Latino, next slide. Now, this is, uh, a decades-long trend, and the trend that we've seen across the country, it's been mirrored in this community and many other communities, is that there was consistent progress towards a less segregated society over time, following in nineteen fifty-four Brown versus Board of Education Decision and the implementation of desegregation orders with a high watermark in the late nineteen eighties. And then from that point forward, all across the country, the trend that we've seen is that as systems have been released from these segregation orders, there's been an increase in racial segregation. And this is exemplified by the Black-White Exposure Index. Uh, and you can see the high wa- high watermark in nineteen eighty-eight, um, and the consistent downward trend since then, next slide. This is also true of economic segregation in American schools. Over the last thirty years, we've seen a dramatic increase in economic segregation, both between school districts and within school districts, uh, and particularly in the largest one-hundred school districts in the country, next slide. Now, this is despite overwhelming evidence that integration, socioeconomic integration, racial integration works. And there are a number of bodies of research to point to, uh, to demonstrate exactly that, next slide. I won't go into tons of depth today, but I think it is important to highlight, and I'm happy to follow up if anyone has any particular questions. I think it's important to mention just a couple of things, that students in integrated schools have higher average test scores than students in segregated schools. The students in integrated schools have better outcomes such as, uh, college enrollment and college persistence. Um, that attending integrated schools, uh, can be more effective than simply adding additional funding to higher poverty schools, and this was demonstrated in a study out of Montgomery County in twenty-ten. Next slide. So, that's why we're in existence, we're in existence because, uh, we have these twin issues of, of stubbornly persistent achievement gap and the increase, the increasing segregation along lines of race and class over time. So what is it that we do as the Bridges Collaborative? Well, first of all, we're a nonprofit, we are funded by foundations, and, uh, we basically serve as a hub, as a community of practice for practitioners from all across the country. So we have small teams of individuals who come from places all across the country, who similarly care about these issues of the achievement gap, uh, and of the trends that we're seeing all across the country, who wanna come together and learn from one another about how we can reverse these trends. And so what we do is we provide resources, tools, support, best practices, whatever it is that folks need uh, to be able to move this issue forward. Now, the other thing that we do that I think is unique is we recognize that segregation is not something that can solely be, uh, solved in the education sector, so we bring housing partners to the table as well, and we have the conversation between the education sector and the housing sector about what is it that we can do together uh, to tackle the scourge of segregation in our communities. Um, and we also highlight strategies and promising practices from, uh, from, from members, so that folks can learn from them. So we are a little different than some of the advocacy organizations out there, and we're a little bit different than some of the, uh, we're certainly different than some of the political organizations out there, we don't advocate for any particular politics. We're about practitioners and giving practitioners the tools and resources they need to, uh, examine these issues in their own communities, next slide. What do we not do? We do not tell districts or partners what to do, we have no formal authority over districts and partners. We don't advocate for a one-size-fits-all, one of the things that is most important that we've learned along the way is that these are, uh, plans that need to be developed in local communities in partnership with, uh, local folks and need to be driven at the local level. So what we do is we offer support and tools and research, and we can tell folks what the best practices are and give them the opportunities to collaborate, but we don't mandate anything, uh, and there's, there, there are no, uh, things that are required um, in terms of implementation as a result of participation in the program. It's also important to note, as I said, we're a nonprofit, we are grant-funded, we do not charge any members for any of the professional development or the training or the collaboration that they receive, next slide. So what is our approach? Uh, our approach is to do, uh, a few things, the first is to think about integration in a, in an expansive manner. So, the first thing that I often tell folks is that we need to recognize that desegregation, even though it did lead to much more integrated schools over the years, and there is a lot of evidence that it, that it led to an increase in student achievement, uh, that there were a lot of things that desegregation in the United States in the last thirty, forty years didn't get right. One of those things is that, uh, oftentimes, there wasn't attention paid to the experience of students who were in integrated schools, uh, making sure that students felt a sense of belonging, that they were well-supported, that folks had mentors and representation among faculty and among staff. And so it's important that we operate from a standpoint of an expansive view of what integration means, as opposed to a more narrow view of just thinking about desegregation, the removal of barriers. We need to think about things like resources, representation, discipline, curriculum, inclusiveness, and all of the factors that make up integration, so that's our starting point. We also talk to our members about making sure that we approach the work with an honest and realistic assessment of the status quo. It's important to look at data and numbers and facts and figures and talk honestly about what is happening in our community. So if we have, uh, a number of schools that are segregated along lines of race and class, it's important to name that, and it's important to embrace the honest truth about where we are. We also, uh, talk about embracing strategies and models from across the country. We think it's important to learn from research, and we think it's important to learn from practitioners. There are folks who are engaged in this work all across the country who have many, many things to offer. Um, and, and we think collaborating with practitioners is one of the best levers to be able to, uh, address some of these issues, next slide. So who are the Bridges Collaborative members? As I mentioned, we have teams of three to five individuals from different school districts and housing organizations all across the country. Uh, and, uh, these include, um, some of the largest school districts in the country. So we've got a team from the New York City Department of Education, the largest school district in the country, Los Angeles Unified, Miami Dade, Dallas, Texas, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Wake County, so, uh, some local North Carolina partners. So what you see from this map is a growing recognition that there are people all across the country who are concerned with these large achievement gaps that we still see in many of our districts across the country, and the trend of increasing segregation, uh, since the, since the late nineteen eighties. Uh, we also have a number of housing organizations at the table, um, and, uh, and, and as I said, this is important because when we talk about dismantling, um, segregation, it's important to bring in the housing component and not just talk about schools. And we have representation from over twenty different states, next slide. So how does this all work? Well, we have organizations and teams of three to five individuals from their organization to participate in national convenings, which you can think of as a souped-up conference, where we have best practices on display, opportunities for collaboration. We do virtual peer collaboration groups, where we bring folks together around a particular problem of practice. So, uh, for instance, we have one launching tomorrow around, uh, how to be attentive to the sort of, the aspects of inclusion. Once you have an integrated student body, how do you make sure that all students are well-served, that they feel a sense of belonging, and that they're all supported well? We have another focus group that's focused on, um, magnet schools and how to make sure magnet schools are fulfilling their original mission of ensuring not just high-quality, quality academics, but also ensuring that they bring a representative diversity of, uh, students from many different populations across, uh, across the community. And we have folks who are singularly focused on this question of student assignment, uh, which is a, an important, but not the only component of this expansive view of integration that we talk about. And so, uh, I think this is one that's, that's particularly on the minds of a lot of folks in this community, um, as there's been a lot of talk about the student choice policy. And so, um, I, I'm gonna dive into just a couple of the best practices that we, some of our members have engaged in across the country as they've examined their student assignment policies and their links to, uh, some of the, the, the prior trends and phenomena that I talked about earlier. Um, next slide, please. So I'm gonna do a quick deep dive and then I will close out, I'm happy to answer any questions. So, uh, one of the areas that we focused in on is looking at where, uh, folks across the country have made, made changes to their student assignment policies that have led to, uh, greater socioeconomic and racial diversity. One, uh, obvious thing that folks have done is to redraw attendance zone boundaries, um, at, with a particular attention to free and reduced lunch percentage of socioeconomic data, um, this economically disadvantaged students, because there are restrictions that the Supreme Court has placed on using race, uh, to make those kinds of determinations. And so what you have here is an example, um, of a school district in Minnesota. And I know the slides are small, but what it shows is that with the changes to their, uh, to their, their, their boundaries, um, they went from, um, vast disparities in the different percentages of economically disadvantaged students in their elementary schools to an almost equal share in all of their elementary schools, simply by redrawing, uh, school boundaries that didn't require onerous amounts of travel by the members of those districts, next, next slide. Um, another way to think about it is to redraw attendance zone boundaries, taking into account the all-important issue of seat capacity, an issue that schools all across the country, uh, districts all across the country need to deal with, um, and combining that with an attention to free and reduced lunch populations, to make sure that as you alleviate space issues, you're also taking into account, um, socioeconomic data, to make sure that you are both, uh, distributing students evenly across the schools that are in existence, and then also paying attention to socioeconomic data, next. Another approach that, uh, I know you're familiar with in, um, Winston-Salem Forsyth County is the use of magnet schools, uh, uh, and in some places, the use of charter schools, but here I'll focus on the use of magnet schools uh, to ensure a nice demographic mix, and I know that in some places, this has been more successful than in other places. And so we, we spend a lot of time talking about what are the characteristics of magnet schools uh, that, um, make them more likely to have a broad range of diverse students, uh, and, and that, rather than less likely to, uh, next slide, please. Um, in Dallas, Texas, which is a, also, uh, the Dallas and the Penn School Districts is also, has a team, uh, at the Bridges Collaborative, we've seen, uh, that school district start brand-new schools with particular focal points and with specific admissions policies that essentially ensure that fifty percent of their students, uh, will be from low-income families and fifty percent of those students come from middle and upper-income families, and these are some of the most highly sought-after and successful, um, schools in, uh, that particular school district, drawing in families back into the school system who, who may have opted out in previous generations. And so this is a, a, another innovative model we've seen where new schools are established specifically for the purpose of diversity, and they've been highly successful and highly popular, um, in districts around the country, next. There's also the, uh, uh, tact of implementing, implementing district-wide equitable choice. And so this is, um, uh, a strategy where a district will basically have a district-wide system for deciding where students attend schools, um, a little bit different than what you all have, uh, in your, um, current choice policy, uh, because this e- essentially is district-wide, and of course, there are geographic considerations for this particular type, uh, of model, next. Then there is implementing district-wide choice, but putting in a weighted lottery to ensure that students from underrepresented populations have, um, a priority at particular schools to make sure that there's an even distribution of students across the, the system, uh, as exemplified by District Fifteen, which is a public school district in New York City, next slide. Then there's also coordinating, coordinating. Then there's also coordinating voluntary inter-district choice in those districts where there is segregation, greater segregation between districts than within a district, as exemplified by Hartford Public Schools in Connecticut. And then, next slide, I've got two more to talk about here. And then in Texas, we've seen a lot of innovations where socioeconomic metrics have been essentially, they've done a deep dive into those because we know that if you look at just free and reduced lunch, those are very large and crude metrics. It's hard to really capture some of the differences in student family backgrounds in that, and so we've seen some very innovative work done in San Antonio, Texas that has led to much more diverse schools based on SES. And then finally, last slide here, the option of merging schools where it's appropriate. We've seen this a lot in New York City, where we've had space considerations merged with socioeconomic diversity considerations and really an attentive process to how you might merge two schools and two school cultures to create one unified, diverse, high-achieving school. So I'll leave it there, and again, the purpose there was just to do a deep dive into one particular topic of the many different topics that we might talk about at the Bridges Collaborative and involve members in deciding where it is that they want to dig in, and just as an example to show you of some of the work that our members are engaged in. And so I'm going to stop there. I'm happy to entertain questions if there are questions about the Bridges Collaborative and also happy to follow up with anyone offline if they prefer to do it that way. Thank you very much.
I see that Board Member Motzinger has her hand up. Before we go to you, Board Member Motzinger, Ms. McManus, could you just briefly let the board know how our district became a partner with the Bridges Collaborative?
Yes, absolutely. And it was an honor to be chosen, so we had to complete an application process, and they, the Bridges Collaborative actually selected us as one of that group of 50 organizations that were going to participate. So it was through an application process, and I think that Stefan described some of that early in the PowerPoint. But we were selected, and it was a great honor to be selected. We've attended, we have a session tomorrow. We've attended two other sessions so far, but what it really is about is strengthening our learning, and some of the articles that we read early on about the importance of integration were just amazing for us to start with. And then we've been breaking up into groups with other districts to learn from their practices, so it's been a great learning opportunity so far and one that I hope we will be able to bring back and as we make future decisions for our system.
Thank you. Board Member Motzinger.
Yeah, thank you. This was a really interesting and good presentation, so I'm glad to see this work and I'm glad to see us being a part of this work. How are the people from districts chosen who will be participants representing the district?
That's a great question. So that is actually, that is a district decision. So the way we structured the applications was we asked, as folks were applying to this program, that they put together a team of folks from a district that made sense. So it's up to each district. So you've got, in some teams, you have the superintendent participating on the team along with the director of equity, a director of student enrollment, and other teams you might have a principal in the mix. So we essentially left it to teams, and that was part of the application process was to see, you know, how committed a particular district would be depending on who it was that they were intending to send.
And do you, is there an intention on having student voices as part of this?
That's a fantastic question. There absolutely is, and for those members who attended the first convening will know that we had a student presentation at the convening, and something that the members may not know yet is that we're going to be launching a student contest to talk to us about the legacy of segregation in their communities, which we think will be a way to, for students to really interject their own voices, not just around the history of this issue, but also an opportunity for them to present proposals and think about how we as communities across the country might be able to move forward. So we think student voice is extremely important, and I think our goal really is to empower the members to come up with structures to go back to their communities to get students involved, but we have a couple of things that we do that directly involve students.
Okay. Just as a thought, our district at one point had been very involved with something called the Society for Organizational Learning Education Partnership, and one of the things that was powerful is that students were full participants in all of the programs. And so I would just put a little bug, and I certainly hope our district will include students as full participants, and I would hope the collaborative would think hard about, because it turns out they're way more attentive than adults tend to give them credit for.
Oh, I completely agree, and you know what? If the district has a good candidate in mind, I will be happy to allow them to increase their, the size of their group and include a student. We'd be happy to have a student in the mix.
That would be excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board Member Breimer.
In the idea of fiscal responsibility, can you please tell me how this is going to work with collaborative strategies that we already, or corporate strategies that we already made a contract with?
Board Member Breimer, I think Ms. McManus would have to respond to that.
Yes, I can address this. The great thing about this partnership is that, number one, they, because of the foundation that support, the foundations that support Bridges Collaborative, there is no charge to the district. So one of the things is these are resources that are going to help us do this important work, and the Bridges Collaborative, that's what their goal is, is to support districts to do this. As far as cooperative strategies, the data that we're receiving from cooperative strategies is only going to help us as we analyze what is going to be, what are going to be our next steps in trying to improve our schools and to improve the outcomes for all students and closed gaps. And so their data would be part of the work that our committees do to actually make the changes we need to make. So it's, does that make sense, or do I need to go into more detail?
No, that's adequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Motzinger, is your hand up again, or is that from last time?
I forgot to take it down.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no more questions than Dr. Lowinger, we appreciate your leadership in taking this time out to update not only our board, but the entire community. As you said, our community is very engaged and supportive of moving our school district so that it is truly representative of the diversity of our community. So thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for having me.
All right. The next discussion item is the 2021-2022 calendar recommendation by Dr. Sam Mills, Director of Administration.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent McManus, thank you for having me. Thank you, Kevin. So it's that time of year again to talk about our upcoming school calendar. We have a calendar committee that has worked up some recommendations for you, and I'm here tonight to share that for you for discussion, so you have time to ruminate on what we present before we're going to ask you to consider taking action at the work session in February. So I want to remind you that the calendar in North Carolina is controlled by North Carolina General Statute 115C-84.2. So we have limited flexibility for what we can do with our school calendar based on this legislation. So I want to remind folks that the legislation requires 185 instructional days or 1,025 instructional hours. In Winston-Salem Forsyth, we have consistently had 180 days, and at six and a half hours a day of instruction, that comes out to 1,170 hours. So we meet the hours requirement by quite a bit. The calendar requires, in addition to those 185 days, 11 holidays, 14 professional development or reserved-for-staff days, and 10 annual leave days. So those are typically our winter break and our spring break. That is a total of 215 paid days for our teachers. All right? So if you look at the other rules, the start date must be no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th and must end nowhere later than the Friday closest to June 11th. So you have a defined window of time when you have to fit those 215 days in. So that gives us limited flexibility for what we can do. There is a provision for waivers, but waivers are weather-related, and unfortunately, we do not qualify for a calendar waiver, and I've asked twice. All right. So what we did this year was we surveyed staff back in December, asking them what their calendar priorities were. So as you can see in this condensed window of time, there are lots of people, people have interest in lots of different features or aspects of a school calendar, but they can't all be done together. So there are conflicting preferences. So based on the feedback that we got from staff, there was a strong majority of staff that wanted first semester to end by winter break, so more of a traditional college schedule where you go home for the holidays and you're done with your exams for first semester. Also, there was a preference for a two-week winter break, which has been pretty typical here in our district. There was a request to do a reserve day for staff at the end of each quarter. This has been something we've consistently done, report cards, grades, maybe a little professional development at the end of each quarter for staff to have that break before the next quarter starts. And then typically, a spring break connected to Good Friday. So that is something we have aimed to do in the past. So those are the priorities based on staff, and so the calendar committee worked to build calendar options around those priorities. The calendar committee was comprised of four principals, three teachers, one from each level. We had instructional support staff. We had our equity team, and accountability was a part of the team, our chief academic officer, legal, our area superintendents, and then all throughout the process, we shared updates with our senior staff and then had them review the calendar, the calendar options before we got to you today. So in January, the 13th to the 20th, we surveyed parents, staff, stakeholders, holder students. Brent Campbell's team, our communications, sent out two text messages, two emails, two phone calls, and it was a banner on our website for a week to encourage people to do the calendar survey. We did it in English and Spanish, and they had three options to choose from. We created a balanced semesters option, so 90 days for each semester. We had a semi-balanced quarters option, so I think it was like 89 days and 91 days for the semesters, and then a unbalanced quarters option. So this was an option where winter break was the break between first semester and second semester. So what we are going to, no, excuse me. So the community voted. We had about 4,300 votes, and there was a slight advantage, about 100-vote advantage for the unbalanced quarters option, that is, with first semester ending before winter break. And then the next choice was the balanced semesters option. I'm going to present both of those options to you and then give you our recommendation. So first, I'll pull the balanced semesters option. Forgive me, I'm going to pull this up. All right. Balanced semesters. I'm going to make this as big as you can. This is still not going to be great at home, on TV, or on the computer, but hopefully you all can see this. So down the right-hand side is the label, and then if you look, turn your head sideways, you can see where we broke out, quarter one is 44 days, quarter two is 46. That's a 90-day first semester. Quarter three is 46, quarter four is 44 for a 90-day semester. Okay? So pretty balanced. So this calendar, which was the second-highest vote getter, has some pros, and there's a few things that we need to draw your attention to. So the calendar starts with four reserved-for-staff days at the beginning of the year. First, the earliest we can start school is August 23rd, so that's when school year will start. There is a reserve day in September, which we did this fall. Our instructional services staff really likes that. It's a good time to come back and continue the training that is done at the beginning of the school year. So that is built in. You'll see in October, at the end of first quarter, there's an R-Day for teachers. We start second quarter. And then this is a feature we really like and we think staff and students will really value, which is a week off during the Thanksgiving break. The first two days of the break are reserve days, so professional development, classroom time for teachers to get caught up, but students obviously will not be in the buildings. Then a leave day on that Wednesday before break, so everybody's out. So it'll be a nice, long chunk of time off in Thanksgiving for staff to be with family, and hopefully we can be back with family in person then. So you'll see, we go the, all the way up to December 17th for the, before the winter break, and we have a solid two-week winter break. Now I want to draw your attention to this B. A B stands for a break day. This is an unpaid day for staff, for teachers and classified staff. It is basically a filler day because we don't have enough of the 215 paid days to make this calendar work. All right? So to give teachers a full two-week break there, we had to put a B day in. All right? Then we come back in January with a reserve day for staff so they can get back to preparing to finish up the semester. First semester will end late January on the 25th, and then there's a reserve day again before we start second semester. So second semester, we have a solid, third quarter, we have a solid two straight months of instruction. The last day of third quarter is going to be the 31st of March, and then you'll see here is an R-Day for teachers. So at the end, our typical at the end of the quarter is an R-Day. Students will be out, and then they'll have a nice, long break for spring break. So we used four leave days, and then we had to use another B day for that, to give a full week at spring break. So it's another unpaid day for staff, teachers, and classified employees. And then the Good Friday holiday is here. I will tell you, we looked at moving this week off. It just made too much sense to finish third quarter, have a break, and then come back and start fourth quarter to align the spring break with the Good Friday holiday. And then we finished the year with three reserve days for staff to clean up their classrooms, get grades in, do any professional development. So this is the balanced semester option. All right. Now I'm going to show you the unbalanced option. All right. Unbalanced option. So you'll see here now, to, remember, the staff, when they were surveyed, it was a priority for us to have first semester end at the winter break. To accomplish that, you'll see that this is really unbalanced. First quarter has 41 days, second quarter has 42 days for an 83-day first semester. Second semester has 97 days, 48 and 49 respectively for the quarters. Now, elementary and middle school staff, it probably doesn't affect quite as much because they're not courses, but at the high school level, if you're teaching a course, you will have a shorter first semester to get the content in and deliver that for your students before the exams at the winter break. So there's some trade-offs to make this calendar work. Again, if we had calendar flexibility with our legislation, we could start the semester earlier, and therefore we could finish before winter break, but that is not an option. So digging into the details, we start the year with five R-days for teachers, and then basically we have straight instruction through first quarter. There's an R-Day at the end of first quarter for teachers before second quarter. There is no break at Thanksgiving other than the two state-assigned holidays, Thanksgiving Day and the Friday after. Of course, the Veterans Day holiday is also a holiday. And then we go as late as we possibly can to make a longer first semester, all the way up to December 22nd, and then we go straight into holidays. So the exams for high school students, that's where most, would be the 16th, 17th, 20th, 21st, and 22nd is usually going to be a makeup exam day. So the pro is kids go home and they're done with exams, they get a really relaxed over the holiday break, and come back fresh and start second semester. The con is it's a very condensed, intense first semester of school. So it is a nice, long break for students. You'll see, you know, they go out the 23rd, and students don't return until the 9th. Staff would be back on the, what is that, the 6th? So there would be a full two-week break for staff with two R-days to kind of get ready and get back at it in January. So more flexibility, second semester in the calendar. So you'll see there's an R-Day built into February to break up third quarter. Then we get into, third quarter will end mid-March on the 18th, and R-Day to start off before fourth quarter. And then fourth quarter, we have the spring break with the four leave days that back up to the Good Friday holiday, so a week off for spring break, and then an R-Day afterwards, so a little bit longer break for students. And then we have instruction going to the June 7th, which is not the latest date that it can possibly go to, but then we have three R-days to finish the year, and so just all instruction is done by the 10th, and all staff duties are done by the 10th. So that is the unbalanced calendar. So I'm really trying to lift up the difference and contrast the two. Remember, the survey came back that staff really valued the first semester Remember, the survey came back that staff really valued the first semester, or, excuse me, valued the R-days and prioritized a first semester ending before winter break. And then the community voted for the, the community staff and teachers had a slight edge, about two percent edge, for this calendar option. However, based on feedback and recommendations from our high school principals, some feedback we've received from staff, that really is an unbalanced first semester. And condensing that instruction for pacing guides would be a big challenge. And we also particularly liked that long Thanksgiving break. We got really good feedback this year with a longer break for students. And we feel like that would be very meaningful for staff, particularly with the difficulty around COVID and the challenges we've had there. So, it is our recommendation that we would go with the balanced semesters option. All right, that would be the first calendar I presented to you. Again, we're not taking action tonight. This is just discussion, and then you have time to ruminate on it. Any questions about either of these calendars before I talk about the early middle college and the Inspire 340 calendars?
I had a que, I mean, have we, we think it's going to be a little confusing. I mean, are staff members okay with having basically break days? So days built into their month's pay that they would not have, that they would not be paid for?
We, that's a great question about the break days. It is not our preference to include break days in the calendar. What we under, we spread them out so they're not two break days in a month. So it's only one less day that staff would be paid because it will particularly impact our classified staff.
Right.
However, in order to kind of have a calendar that makes sense, the trade-offs are to have that longer break at Christmas and to have the Thanksgiving break, and then a full week at spring break, we needed to use filler days or the B-days in order to accomplish those goals.
And, and I would just say, my only other concern with the, the calendar being recommended is with the, the spring break being before and not associated with that Good Friday break. Would that, you know, just wondering what that will do to attendance during that time? And if families are kind of used to that, will we, in, in a sense, lose instruction because the students will be vacationing, whether we're in person or we're remote? I mean, just saying, they won't be, you know, they'll, they'll take that time. I, I just, I get the, the extended length at Thanksgiving, but I, I know a lot of families will, you know, if, if we, as a people, are allowed to travel and do those things, I think, especially if, if that's something we're doing, they may really take advantage of, of doing that. So I just wonder if we'll lose instruction time? And then I had a great concern about the, the break days. Yeah.
Yes. Sam, could you explain again about the two unpaid days for the teachers? And is that in our calendar for this current year now also?
Thank you. Yes, I do believe we have at least one B-day in our current school year calendar. So teachers are paid two-hundred-and-fifteen days during the year. And in order, again, to accomplish sort of the, the logistics of the calendar, we needed to include the break days. Otherwise, you might have a four-day spring break, a shortened Christmas break, a winter break, something like that. So, the break days are just, you know, if you're a twelve-month or eleven-month staff, you're going to be paid. But if you're a classified staff, you will not be paid for the break days. If you're a teacher, you would not be paid for that break day in December. And then I think the next one was in April. Any other questions about those two calendars? Okay, I want to lift up, and we need to talk very briefly about, sorry, I'm looking for my presentation. We need to talk very briefly about the Inspire 340 calendar and the early middle college calendar. So, Inspire 340 schools have the, I think last year and then this year again, they will request a slight change to the calendar to focus on school turnaround efforts. So when you make, we will have an option for the, for the work session where we can share with you all what the Inspire 340 calendar looked like before you'll take action. But it will be mirrored after the calendar that you select for the district. So it'll basically be the same calendar with some early release days and some extra staff development time built into that calendar. And to, it'll, it'll focus on Dr. Roseborough's school turnaround efforts. It'll be very intentional with the professional development for staff in those buildings. So, that calendar will be shared with you at the work session. But just know, whatever calendar we go with as a district, the Inspire 340 calendar will mirror that. Okay? Next, our early middle college, they have a unique calendar also because they are on the campus, that, those schools are on the campus of Forsyth Tech, which has a different calendar. So it's more of the college calendar. So Mr. Hurrell, principal, has always worked closely with their administration to develop a calendar and then uses our district's calendar as well as a guide to try to align the reserve days for staff so the professional development for the early middle college teachers can participate in our professional development. So we work to keep them as closely aligned, but also respecting and honoring the Forsyth Tech's campus calendar. Okay? So that is another calendar that we will share with you. It will not be dramatically different than what we present as a district, but just know that there's a small population of students that it impacts and they need a unique calendar for their needs.
I had just one more feedback, I guess. So staff, when we go back to the, to the, the original cal, the calendar that, that the staff preferred, where we finished the, before winter break. And then I think I heard you say that principals felt like that might be a bit much, especially for our high schools. But what are our, I mean, do, have we, can we take out of the data and say, do the high school teachers, who are the ones responsible for keeping the students on the pace? I mean, do they believe that that's going to work? I mean, I, before I take a vote, I'd kind of like to know, staff is such a broad word, but those who are really bringing the students through the curriculum and having to adhere to that pace, do they feel like that that is something that they can do and would be beneficial? You know, I've, since I have served on the board, I, I've always heard negative feedback from, from, from teachers, from students, and from their families, that the kids are stressed over the break and they're still trying, you know, that there's no closure. And so, I'd like to know specifically, you know, from the, from the teacher, is that, if, if staff thought that was okay, what, what, what does the teacher feel? And, and even a little more feedback just around that? Because I think that's, I mean, I'll be real honest that, you know, we've had a chance to look at them, and I think there's a lot of, there's some pretty big cons to both of them. But, you know, that's been something that, that I remember hearing year after year about trying to wrap that up. And then, looks like we have that done, but we're not recommending it. So I'd like, you know, if we could give, at least me, I don't know if other board members, but some feedback on that before we have to take action at the work session.
So, so your questions are exactly the concerns of the calendar committee of Superintendent McManus and Dr. Pratt when we've discussed these, which is why we've kind of presented two options with you. You kind of touched on a few things, and so I want to take a couple of minutes to address those. So when we surveyed staff about their priorities, it really was to understand, when you're building the calendar, there's, you could go a bunch of different directions, and wanting to know, help us guide our work. So when they came back with the balanced, excuse me, first semester ending before the winter break, that's a clear priority. But you can see, when you create a calendar, what that does to the semesters. And knowing that that creates a pretty big con, we had to come up with balanced semester options. So then when we surveyed the community, stakeholders, parents, staff, teachers, basically who, anyone who went on the link in our website and answered the survey, they selected with a slight majority, were slight edged, about two percent, a hundred votes, I think, were the unbalanced option. However, we intentionally did not break up who request, who asked for that calendar. Because we didn't want to get into a situation where if staff voted for balanced semesters and families voted for unbalanced semesters, then we are picking over parents or staff. And we feel like we're all part of a community and that all our votes should be weighted equally. So, we were intentional about not breaking that because of the potential where staff's needs might be oversee parent needs, and that's not necessarily a great look for us. So we felt like as a community, we needed to weigh all that equally, all their vote equally. So, when you look at the consequences of the unbalanced option, which is a pretty dramatic swing in the number of days per semester that has the biggest impact at the high school level. And we heard from staff today, especially as we had put this on the website, about the concerns, right? So, one issue that'll come up, I'm sure you'll hear about, is if you're a teacher of a EOC course, and some, for example, if you teach biology first semester, and you're compared to a teacher who teaches biology second semester, who got ten extra days to teach that course and deliver the content, there's a, an equity issue there for the teacher who's being evaluated on the first semester performance. So, some of those things started to come to light and feeling like the neat, you know, many teachers have been teaching courses for a long time and based on a ninety-day semester. And so when you knock off seven days of that semester for first semester, that poses some pretty big challenges to staff. But, you know, I expect during these two weeks before you all take a vote, that we'll continue to get more information and hear from our staff about, I think we can manage that, the set, it's worth it to finish first semester before winter break. The pro of not having exams looming in the first or second week of January is a huge one. So, it, this is, you're right, this is a tough choice, which is why we're bringing you two options. But our recommendation is the balanced semester for the reasons we've, we've discussed. All right. So, our next steps are, give you time to ask questions, think questions, for us to follow up on it, hear from staff. And then, at the work session, we will bring forth our recommendation and ask you to take action. There are some pretty significant next steps that need to happen pretty soon with our calendar. So we're eager to get this approved. And then, start working on twenty-two, twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the High School Camera Project Phase One by Jonathan Wilson, our security director.
Good evening, Ms. McManus, Chair of the Board.
Good evening.
As you know, the 2016 bond that was passed by the voters gave us an opportunity to install door access in all of our middle schools and upgrade our existing milestone camera system by adding additional IP cameras in all of our schools. And thanks to the voters of Forsyth County, these projects have, have, and will continue to have a lasting impact on our strategic goal number five, to foster an inclusive climate that values the safety and well-being of all students, faculty, and staff. Just to give you a recap of where we are and where we've been, in 2019, we completed the middle school door access project, touching all fourteen of our middle schools, as well as phase one of our elementary school camera projects. And that touched thirty-one schools. In 2020, we completed phase two of our elementary schools. That was, those were the remaining eleven schools. And also during that time, just a side note, we were awarded a $300,000 school safety grant project, which allowed us to secure all kitchen doors across the district and additional doors in administrative locations. So in 2021, we plan to complete our high school camera upgrade in two phases. The first slide you'll see here is that we're now ready to start that project. That project touches seven high schools with a total of four-hundred-and-five cameras. And that project is comprised of relocating existing seventy-two cameras that are in good working order, they're up, up-to-date cameras, and then adding an additional three-hundred-and-thirty-three new cameras in those seven schools. Those schools that'll be touched are Carter, Carver, Kennedy, Main Street Academy, Mount Taber, Parkland, and Reynolds. The scope of the project is to provide a completely turnkey solution with the product, with the installation, the configuration, and the mapping into our milestone program. So what we do, when you click on the milestone program, you actually see a map of the school. You can click on those cameras that are taking you right to it. And also, we have CAD drawing showing where all those cameras are. So Brent Cook and I spent the better part of this past year, throughout the summer. When we started walking these schools, it was hot outside, we were sweating. And then by the time we ended, we were wearing coats and walking around throughout the COVID, these, these past few months. Throughout these projects, we've been chasing the technology. So now we're allowed to cover more square footage in a more efficient and, and cost-effective manner. These schools that I'm talking to you about tonight will receive a combination of three-hundred-and-sixty-degree four-view cameras. Those were not available when we first started. And the, a new two-view camera, and that started, we actually walked these schools and had to walk them again once this new technology came out. And then, that'll be combined with single-view cameras, like we've used in the past. I will tell you, the high school camera committee and the principals each viewed their, their plans for their school and were satisfied with what they saw. So the invitation to bid, the bid invitation was sent on December the tenth. It was advertised between the twenty-first and the twenty-ninth. We received, we did two pre-bid meetings, and the bids were received and opened on January the eleventh. We received four bids. One was from Brady Integrated Security. It was $694,000. We received a bid from Call Twenty-Four, but unfortunately, they failed to provide the required bid bond. So we couldn't look at their bid. Encore Technology Group provided a bid of $799,000. And KNC Technologies gave us a bid for $598,000 with an alternate bid that we had requested for the parking lot at RJ Reynolds. For those of you that have been to the RJ Reynolds parking lot on the bottom side of the auditorium, that is a really hard parking lot to cover. It's removed from the school. So we've asked them to give us a solution to cover that. And we think that they've, they've done that at the cost of $8,597. So their total bid would be six-hundred-and-six, which makes them the lowest bid. And we also ask that each one of these vendors to provide us a schedule. So if KNC is awarded this contract tonight, they plan to begin on, at Parkland High School on February the eighth and finish at Reynolds by the end of March. That's a really ambitious goal, to do one school per week. I think that our tech, our maintenance folks are going to work ahead of them and take the old cameras down as they're putting the new cameras back up. So our recommendation is to, that you guys approve the high school Phase One camera project to be awarded to KNC using funds from the 2016 bonds.
So, I have, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have one question. I'm curious as to how these schools were selected. Because obviously, that's on all the schools, so you're going to have to do a phase two. And I just want to know what the thought process was there.
Yes, ma'am. So, the schools that are remaining are, if you know, is East Forsyth and West Forsyth. Those are campus-style schools. They're going to be really hard. East Forsyth also has a projected new construction, I think, down the road. So, North Forsyth is included also in that. North Forsyth is going to be touched by, I think, the 2016 bond with some construction. Other schools, I'm trying to think. Reagan and Atkins are, are footprints of each other. So the, the strange thing about Reagan is Reagan still has a DVD system and Atkins has a milestone IP camera system. But it needs to be upgraded. So it's almost like what we're doing at Parkland. Parkland has an IP camera system, needs to be upgraded. We're going to reuse some of those good cameras within these other schools. When we do the second phase, Atkins, some of those cameras will come down to be dispersed amongst other schools in places, in places like stairwells that are not so, all the cameras that come out of Parkland will be put in stairwells in other schools. So there was some, some strategic planning as to how we chose the schools and the amount of schools in each, so it didn't overwhelm us.
Okay, thank you.
But I will tell you that our plan is, as soon as this thing is awarded, as soon as this contract is awarded, Brent and I are going to start walking schools again to start planning for the next one. Because we want to get this done in 2021. Yes, ma'am?
Jonathan, I really appreciate you including the RJR parking lot because that's an area where a lot of people are out in, in parking. And to have that included in there, I think, was, was really a very, very good idea. So, I just want to thank y'all for doing that. And in these bids, did the other ones include the parking lot in their bid? Or was it an alternate?
We, we asked for them to, to provide it as an alternate bid. I will say that I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure that each one of them provided the bid that we requested. So, KNC was, KNC's very thorough in their bids. They know our schools. They, they worked on our camera projects in our elementary schools and our door access control. So, they're, they're very familiar. But I will tell you that they walked these schools, KNC particularly walked these schools twice. They walked Reynolds two times. Because Reynolds is a really hard school to, to do this in because of the, the way the school's built, the way this campus is laid out. Yes, ma'am. And just to, just to piggyback on that, all of our other schools that we're touching that we're touching in this project have their parking lots covered to a degree as well. They're much easier to cover by putting it on the side of the building versus where the Reynolds parking lot is located. East and West is going to be quite a challenge when we get to those parking lots.
I just saw that the other one, it was broken out as an alternate. And I didn't see it in the other two bids as an alternate. That's why I was wondering if it was combined as a base bid or if it was in fact an alternate. And I see apparently it was an alternate.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the, on our discussion is the Insight Human Services with Deborah Harris, our Chief Program Officer of Student Services.
Chair Woodbury, Board Members, interim Superintendent McManus. I'm here tonight seeking approval for the Insight contract and updating on data of the program. The Insight program aligns with our strategic plan under goal number five, climate and safety, under objectives A, B and C, to improve the quality of learning environment, student behavior, well-being and overall safety. Objective B, improve access to school-based mental and behavioral health supports. And objective C, to promote healthy cognitive, social, emotional and physical development for all. The Insight program promotes safety in classrooms and in schools. The funding source for our Insight program and the services. This is a renewal contract for our longstanding partnership that we have with Insight. This is paid through our at-risk funding costing $10,416 monthly. The state school board of education allotment policy designates a portion of the at-risk funds to be used for alcohol and drug prevention to include alcohol and drug testing and treatment. The services rendered by Insight are testing, individual, group and family counseling, assessment and referral process and crisis intervention. All of these services are aligned with our at-risk funding requirements. The Insight program, excuse me, supports and is in compliance with the Board Policy 5131.6, which refers to It's Our Call, It's My Call programs, which are utilized by Insight program and also nationally-recognized programs. The Insight program is also utilized for students with discipline infractions for drug and alcohol abuse. The It's My Call is a mandatory random alcohol and drug testing program for high school students who will participate in extracurricular activities. It's My Call is a voluntary random alcohol and drug testing program for high schools and middle school students who lead by example. Also, we have discipline infractions. An administrator may recommend that a student attend the Insight in exchange for a stay in discipline. A stay of discipline means that the recommended discipline will not become official as long as the student meets the requirements of the stay. And all of the testing that is done by Insight is private and is confidential. Looking at some of the data, this is the data of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County High School Youth Risk Behavior Survey. This survey is conducted every two years during the spring and it's conducted with students in ninth through 12th grades. The survey is sponsored by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools in conjunction with the Forsyth Department of Public Health. In 2019, the spring of 2019, it was administered to approximately 1,786 high school students throughout the district. And the response rate for the schools was approximately 94%. This data shows a correlation between risky behaviors and academics. So if you look at the first column, it has risky behaviors. The next four columns, A, B, C and D and F are categorized together. Those are grades that students may receive in their classes. And the last column signifies, is that a significant correlation? So if you look down about the fourth one, for example, it says currently use of marijuana. So of the students that answered yes to this, if you look over to the box that's highlighted in the red, it shows 50.5%. So yes, that is a strong correlation of academics. If you go down three more, you can look at where it says ever-used electronic vapor products. Of the students that answered yes to this, 67.5 students have Ds and Fs in their classes. And so that is a correlation with academics. Also, information from this, this program, it states that there was an increase, students reported an increase in behaviors that currently use marijuana, have they used vapor products, currently using vapor products or taking drugs such as oxycodin, vicodin or codeine, which was not prescribed to them. There was a decrease in currently drinking alcohol, currently binge drinking and smoking of cigarettes. So looking at some of the definitions, we've already talked about It's My Call, It's Our Call and the violations. Also, we have the SAFE program, which is a substance abuse family education program that is offered to our first-time offenders. And both the parent and the guardian attends this program. And it's three nights and it's three hours each night. The vape program, which was just established in 2019, 2020, looking at the results from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, they just established this program. And this is for first-time offenders for the vape products. And then also, we have the treatment. And that is each student that is referred for treatment, they will have a CCA, a comprehensive clinical assessment, that is done. And then from there, the students are either put into group and peer counseling, individual counseling, family counseling, some of their other programs, the Seven Challenge programs, substance abuse program. And so students may be in one program or they may be in a combination of two or more programs. Next information shows a three-year span from 2017-18, 2018-19, 2019-20. So in 2017-18, there were 1,663 students that were tested. In 2018-19, there were 1,513 students tested. And 2019-20, there were 942 students tested. So over a three-year period, there were 1,418 students tested. And so we know in that 2019, 2020, that's when we had the COVID and we had remote learning. And so that's why the numbers are significantly lower. Looking at our Insight program of students per program, we looked at three programs, the Crosby Scholars, the It's Our Call and It's My Call. We looked at Crosby Scholars, Crosby Scholars High School students are required by Crosby Scholars to participate in It's My Call program. The middle school students, it is optional. So if you look at the red bar graph, that denotes our Crosby Scholars, how many are tested as per year. Looking over a three-year period, there were 1,627 Crosby Scholars that were tested. The orange bar denotes students that were tested under Our, It's Our Call. And so looking over a three-year period, there were 2,395 students that were tested under this program. And the gray, the gray bar graph denotes students that were tested under It's My Call. And so looking over three years, there were 1,931 students that were tested. Students in the program, students may be enrolled in more than one program. For example, if they're a Crosby Scholar, they have to enroll in It's My Call. But they also can be an athlete. So they would be enrolled in Crosby Scholar, It's Our Call, It's My Call. So it's what the student denotes the different programs, that's what they are. So that's why there's some discrepancies in the numbers. The next graph shows the number of students that were tested positive per year. So in 2017-18, there were 164 students that tested positive out of the 1,663. And 2018-19, there were 150 students that tested positive out of the 1,513. And in 2019, 2020, there were 88 students that tested positive out of the 942. And again, that last year was because of the COVID and the remote, the remote learning. The next bar graph over just reflects those numbers, but it reflects them in percentages. Also, looking at violations, students that had discipline violations. So we broke those numbers down by grade level. And administrator may recommend that a student, may recommend a student to the Insight program for violations. And so we looked at each level, elementary, middle and high school. So looking, again, at a three-year span, in 2017-18, 14 elementary students. There were 14 elementary violation referrals, 73 for middle school and 141 for high school, which is a total of 228. In 18-19, there were four violation referrals for elementary. That was down by 10. There were 98 for middle school, which was up by 25. And then there were 161 for high school, which was up by 20, which add a total for 263. In the 19-20 school year, there was one referral violation for elementary. So it's down by three. There were 128 violations for middle school, which was up by 30. But there were 142 for high school that were down by 19. So they had a total of 271. So over a three-year span, there were 762 violation referrals. So next, we're looking at a two-year span, 2018 and 2019. And this, and this graph shows, the next slide. This graph shows the substance violations that occurred. So if you look, the highest two substance violation, the first one was THC, which is marijuana. And the second was the vape. So the THC was 149 and the vape was 66. Looking at the substance abuse violations for 1920, you can see again, the two highest substance violation was for the THC, which is marijuana, which was 135. But that was down by 14. And then you look at vape was the second, which was up, which is 91, which was up by 25. So vaping has become a, very much of a concern in our schools, as in everywhere. Looking at our next graph, it kind of shows us the violation referrals and it looks at the number of referrals, the number of, who made it to their first initial treatment appointment, numbers who didn't make it to their first initial treatment appointment. And then it also looks at the number of completion. So for 2017, 2018, there were 110 that were referred for treatment and there were 100 that were referred for SAFE. Out of the 110 for treatment, 95 made it to their initial referral. So for the treatment, they have initial referrals where they get their CCA, their comprehensive clinical assessment. Through the SAFE program, they do not have that. They just have those three days, three hours. So out of the 110 that were there, 95 made it to their first initial placement. 15 did not. But looking at the treatment and the SAFE program, combined, 92 students completed the program. And throughout the program, students are tested randomly and they're also tested at the end of the program to make sure that they are drug and alcohol-free. So we have the numbers of 18-19. So out of the treatment program, there were 109. And then the SAFE, there were 134. So out of the program, the treatment, 89 made it to that initial appointment. 20 did not. But with the combination of the SAFE and the treatment program, 134 students did complete the program. Looking at 2019, 2020, that's when last year we added the vape program to it. And so we have the treatment, the SAFE and the vape. So with the treatment, there were 80 students SAFE, 118. I know it's small, I'm even having a little, and also the vape were 35. So out of that first initial program that we had, we had 69 that met their first treatment referral. But through the three programs together, we had 96 students that completed the program. So our engagement of treatment, so over the past three years, has increased by 11% for the engagement of treatment. And so what this is, the first column is this school year, then it is the average events attended and then it is the percentage of engagement. So how it reads in 2017-18, the average events attended, so that meant one student attended at least nine different events or nine different sessions. And so that in turn was a 49% engagement rate. Engagement rate was calculated by attendance, not by completion of the program, but by attendance. 2018-19, students attended an average of 14 events. The engagement rate was 52. 19-20, it was they averaged about 17% events attended and it was an increase of 60% of engagement. So as we go along, there has been some increases in events that students tend and the engagement. So looking at our Winston-Salem Forsyth County treatment data, so if you look at the bottom going up. So 17-18, there were, it tells you the SAFE program, there were 111, 106 that started in the treatment program, which is together 217. Out of that 217, 125 did complete the program. And that's with the violations, whether they were in violations, It's My Call or It's Our Call. In 18-19, if you're looking at, we had the SAFE program 149 and then you had 96 for treatment, that's 245. And out of that, 152 completed the program. Again, violations, It's My Call, It's Our Call. Looking at 2019, there were 125 SAFE, 39 vape, 78 treatment. Together, that is 242. And out of that, 96 completed the program. But that's also when we went on remote learning and we did go, and we did have COVID. So from this year, there has been... So from this year, there has been 22 that were in treatment. 14 have completed treatment thus far. We still have eight in treatment, and then we have one elementary school referral. And so the way we look at it is, if a student does not successfully complete the program, it's not a total loss, because the student, we did help plant the seed. The student did get life skills, coping skills. We talked about treatments, how, what they can do, how they can get out of different situations where they find themselves being exposed to drugs or alcohol. Next is just the treatment cost for the Insight Program. And so it just goes across and looks at the different treatment sites over the years. And so you can see, we, on average, it's 10,0416, which is $124,000. But as you can see, there are additional costs, but Insight absorbs those costs. They only charge us what we are contracted for. Any other costs above and beyond, even if they keep a student longer, they absorb that cost. So just some satisfaction guarantee surveys from our parents, comments from our students. They have a better understanding of my daughter. A parent, I know the difference between some of the drugs. One of the things that stood out for both of them is that they said that they learned about communicating between each other and listening with each other. And so our benefits from the program is all Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, students can attend the alcohol treatment program regardless of their ability to pay. It supports our social-emotional learning, because it provides students and their families with substance abuse prevention and treatment. Alcohol and drug prevention programs help our students' success and their future success. And it also gives the principals a choice, instead of being punitive with somebody that has violated our, had made violations to our policy, that they can go to a drug treatment center instead of having punitive. And also looking at our testimonies, and above our contract, Insight also does classes at our schools and talks about drug and abuse, and they work closely with the KCK. So at this time, I'm asking for approval of the Insight contract.
Are there any questions? I think that this was, I think Board Member Motzinger has a question, but I think this was a follow-up from a previous presentation, and the board wanted, you know, some data to support this program. Board Member Motzinger.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. My question is, of the money we're spending, what percentage of that goes into drug testing versus treatment?
I am not for sure which one goes into drug testing or treatment, but if on Slide 16, it talks about the different areas in which the money is spent for.
No, I understand. I was just concerned that I think the last time we discussed, I was asking which percentage goes into actual sort of treatment or education versus testing. And so I would really like an answer to that. And part of that is that I know there is a great deal of mixed feelings about whether requiring random drug testing is effective or not. I would like to point out the sort of correlation to bad grades and a great deal of other substance abuse problems is partly because kids who are using a lot of substances often are having a very hard life in many aspects. That is, not just academically, but usually things are not going well for them pretty globally. So I'm not sure if the bad grades are connected to the drug use, the drug use is connected to the bad grades, or they're both correlated with kids who are in trouble, apart from all of this. But if you could find out, please, how much of the money we're spending is for random drug testing and for test kits versus how much is being spent on providing services to students, I would be so grateful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I will get back with you on that information.
Board Member Parker.
This year, I know that we didn't have a ton of data from that, but I mean, how have we been, from looking at the contract or whatever, it looks like we're paying about $10,000 a month. This year, what, what's that money been used for? Because we obviously can't be testing children, we can't, I mean, what, what is the program, the, you know, programs look like? Are they having those, or, I mean, what's been going on this year? And have we been paying the $10,000, or has it been a reduced fee based on what we have used?
So it's based on what we've had used. So this far, we have had so far 22 students that were in treatment, that continued treatment for last year. We also have had a elementary school referral. And so they've been continuing the treatment with those students. And so upon approval, they are going to be going out and testing at the schools. They usually test 3% of the school population that are in those programs, which they agreed to increase that percentage rate. And also, they'll be going out, not just one time to the school, they'll be going out several, making several different trips to the school, since the students are in cohorts, to make sure that they meet students at the different cohorts.
So they will be increasing, so hopefully they'll have close to the same number of students?
Yes, ma'am, that's what, they were increasing, so they can have close to the same number. Yes, ma'am.
I had another question about the SAFE program. It's mandatory that the parent attend.
Yes.
Is there a way if a child, is there a program if a child wants to attend, but a parent maybe can't or isn't willing, that they can have that same opportunity?
Yes, they can have a individual treatment program if they, if they choose to do so, if they don't.
And that looks like it's much more intensive, so I mean, I'm just.
It's a little bit more intensive, but if they can either participate in the SAFE program or they can have the treatment program. And yes, ma'am, it is a little bit more intensive, and that can be an individual one.
I guess I, I guess I feel, for a child who, who is willing to have the rehabilitation, but doesn't have that support system, I don't know, that just, it doesn't seem equitable to me. And so I'm wondering if they could look into something that, that would, would value that child wanting to make a difference, but that maybe doesn't have all the support that they need in other areas.
Absolutely, I will, I will look into that.
One, one final question. You said the State Board of Education says that a portion of our, of our at-risk funds should go toward drug testing. What do they recommend, and what do other systems do?
They don't, they didn't give a specific number, but they, under the funding, they are recommending that it would be summer school instruction for at-risk students, transportation remediation, drug and alcohol prevention program, early prevention programs, safe schools, and preschool screening. So those are the categories that our at-risk funding is to be utilized in.
It would be interesting, I think, for us to see as a board, from the system, what percentages we spend in all of those areas. That's very interesting, thank you for that information. And I do think that it would be helpful to us, especially since we're going to be looking at the budget sometime soon, to, to see what percentages we as a system spend in each of those areas. Thank you, that's good information, thank you for that. I wasn't, I haven't heard that, you know, put out in the different areas before, so thank you.
If there are no further questions, thank you, Ms. Harris, we appreciate your information.
Thank you.
The next item is the Title I Reading Base Camp for the Orton-Gillingham contract by Dr. Paula Wilkins, our principal at Cook Literacy Model School.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes, and Superintendent McManus, and members of the board. Just come before you today, as you so eloquently heard from my teachers, about the benefits of Orton-Gillingham and some of our work that we've done at Cook since our restart. So just as a reminder, there are lots of flexibilities afforded to restart schools. For today, I want to highlight some of the differentiated curriculum options through Orton-Gillingham. So what is Orton-Gillingham, AKA OG? Well, it's a structured literacy approach. And it's all about, even though it was initially founded for students with dyslexia, some of the benefits from the structured approach help to universally teach lots of the foundational principles of literacy. So it's a multisensory approach with a phonetic focus. It's a teacher-guided approach to teaching reading that includes a clear focus on reading and spelling in a whole classroom setting. So I just want to talk about for the approach that we are proposing, the continued use for Cook. It's a whole classroom educator model, where in most settings, OG is normally used in one-on-ones or very small groups as an approach. So the focus is done through three levels of decoding and spelling, from the sound, the syllable, and the morphological level. So the introductory morphology piece emphasizes increased vocabulary. And I will just say as a shout-out to Cook and a lot of our great science scores, the focus on vocabulary was huge from a morphology standpoint. The support, of course, is for both our general education students as well as our special education students. So the structure of the training, it's a 40-hour training, so yes, intensive, quite a bit of time. But I have never heard any individual who has taken the time to engage in the training, who has not said it was time well spent. So initially, before we started our implementation at Cook, I spent the 40 hours in the training myself. It's hard to lead and support the work if you've never experienced it and participated in yourself. Seven hours of training a day, I will tell you, teachers leave with their brains full. But after we're able to help to unpack and synthesize the knowledge, we're able to move forward and think about from a basic level, how do we move forward and ensure the success? It's focused on teacher practice and implementation through feedback, which I think is extremely essential for any implementation you do in a school. If teachers can't get feedback, how do they know how they can improve? And that has been a huge part of our systemic initial efforts. Ongoing follow-up support and observations provided through folks who've had lots of experience, both at the school level and through consultative support. So just a little bit of history about our OG journey at Cook. We began initially back in 2016, 17, with 100% of our teachers training this approach. We were able to utilize this and leverage it in every classroom, as well as use it for intervention support in small groups and intensive support for students who are needing additional one-on-one support. We continue making this a priority and continue this for several years. We followed up each training with observation and feedback. The initial consultant who founded this particular approach, Ron Yoshimoto, visited our school three years in a row to provide direct support to our teachers. And we continued this by training in-house staff trainers, who then trained and supported more teachers in our school. For 2020, 21, it was proposed the district would transition to an OG-based curriculum for teaching finance foundations, but this core curriculum was not adopted. So we did not continue with our approach for continually training teachers. So some highlights in our data. So now, going into our fifth year, can y'all believe it's been five years? Five years of our restart efforts at Cook. We've doubled our performance, and it's exceeded growth for three years. We've tripled, quadrupled our science achievement, I'm really excited about that, and doubled our overall learning outcomes. And for reading, we doubled those outcomes since we started, so we're really excited about that. And just on a side note, when we started, 0% of our third graders could read. We're at a little over 23%. Of course, we don't have testing now, and we look forward to getting some additional measure for continuing to measure our gains. We've been removed from the low-performing schools and recurring low-performing schools list, and we've moved a letter grade. So we're all excited about those data and achievement pieces, so thank you very much. Hard-working teachers that helped make that happen. So just wanted to provide just some overview pieces of information. In your board book packet, you have additional information about the OG approach. How can I support with questions, or answering them, hopefully?
I just think it's great, thank you.
It's wonderful.
Paula, I just think this has been a fun trip to, to take a ride on, because starting and how it started out and going into the schools and seeing the success that has happened has, has just been overwhelming, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert-Hayes.
I think it's wonderful that you do it. I think lots of times OG is used, like you said, in one-on-one or sporadically. But when you see that, that program used year after year after year, just like your teacher, you know, said to us that that child's heard that numerous times. It builds on it, it's such a wonderful foundation, and, and it is, I mean, it's absolutely wonderful program. And to have that consistency is key. And I think that's a lot of the reasons for all of your success, lots of reasons for success. But, and it's neat to go, to listen in down, when you're walking down the hall and, and hear that very same language coming out of classroom after classroom after classroom. So I, I, I think it's wonderful. I think we ought to emulate what you're doing there lots of other places, so thanks.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Parker said, well, all, all the comments I agree with. And so I just hadn't seen Ms. Paula in a long time, so I was just happy to see you up here. Can't wait till we can get back and do a little bit more visits in a normal way, so. But, but I really appreciate it. I think your rock star teachers brought to light everything that we really could read, but, but you really brought it to light of what happens in, in your classroom every day, so thank you.
And as you prepare to leave, I just want to say, Dr. Wilkins, that we appreciate your leadership and the service of your staff at Cook. I know that you extend yourself, not only, you know, within the confines of the hours that you work, but you, you work effortlessly with our community to continue to uplift the community of Cook. I know that I have been on different community group calls and conferences, and you're there after hours, before hours, trying to encourage the Cook community to move forward. So I really appreciate your leadership.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Next, we have the purchase of the Plexiglas barriers with Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board, and Ms. McManus. I have a quick item update for you this evening. Ms. McManus has been speaking to our principals and our teachers over the last couple of weeks, asking them to come forward and share any additional items that they'd like to see from us. And so one of those items is Plexiglas barriers for teachers to be able to use primarily when students are eating meals in the classroom. The additional item that we saw teachers ask for was for support in their classroom tables for lower grade levels, where the students may be facing each other but still be six feet apart in a classroom where they don't have the single-student desks, where they're all facing forward in the classroom. And so in my discussions with Andrea Gillis, our CFO, we were able to look at our CARES dollars and feel like we can provide the support that these schools need by asking the teachers if they want these Plexiglas shields. You have the specs for those in your board books this evening. And by not exceeding a million dollars, we feel like we can provide what they'd like for kind of this first round, see if this works for their needs. see if this works for their needs, and then start to see if they have any additional needs that we need to come back to you with. So the table mount is a single sheet. Again, you have that in your spec book. The other piece is a portable unit. That was something specific that the teachers seemed to ask for so that they could put it up on their desks, so they could take it down off their desks. And the great thing about that is they can also move it around the room if they need to do a one-on-one with a student to help them with an assessment or for, excuse me, instructional guidance. And so they are portable and collapsible and also easy to clean. And so one of the other reasons why this is the level of support we want to provide in this first round is because our strong schools NC toolkit does not allow us to put up Plexiglas and forego the six-foot distancing. And so as we continue throughout this school year and we get into the next school year and we start to see if those guidelines begin to change, we may be able to look at other options for our classrooms to support students and teachers and faculty. Do you have any questions or feedback for me this evening about the Plexiglas?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
The next item is the middle school redistricting recommendations by Mr. Homa Attashbar, our Executive Director of Student Assignments.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the Board, and Ms. McManus. All right, so I'm here to talk about where we are right now with our recommendation for middle school redistricting after our first presentation, going to community, and then presenting that to the Choice Committee. And now we're here basically asking you for action on this, approval on these middle school redistricting. All right, the first one is Louisville Middle School that will open up in August. It's going to complete construction this summer. We're going to go, we're recommending to go with option two, which basically aligns the elementary to middle school feeder patterns. And so we're going to allow the residential students to attend for '21-'22 school year and then enter Louisville into the Choice Program for the '22-'23 school year. And we're assigning grades six through eight to Louisville for next year. All right, for Haynes Middle School, we're going to reassign the residential Haynes students to Merrill Springs in their geographic area, assigned grades six through eight for the '21-'22 school year with the option for them to stay as magnet students if they want to complete at Haynes on the hillside, basically. And then we're going to keep them in the same zone. So the students in the Haynes residential area, the old Haynes residential area, that's not going to be part of Merrill Springs. They'll still have the option to go to Northwest Middle School as part of their choices within their zones. For Philo Hill Middle School, we did some adjustments after feedback. So basically, we're going to do construction onsite instead of assigning the Philo side of Philo Hill to Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy during renovation construction. So we're going to keep those students onsite. And we are going to separate still the two boundaries. So because we're reassigning the Haynes residential students up into the north side to their geographic area, we're going to create a boundary around Haynes, basically it's the old hill boundaries. So those students that live in that neighborhood will have a residential school to be able to attend at the Haynes. We're not changing any of the programming there. We're just going to allow some neighborhood students to attend school there. On the Philo side, again, we're going to do construction onsite. But on the programming piece of it, what we're going to do next is we've been working already with our instructional staff to come up with some options as far as programming goes. And we're going to do a robust survey for the community, starting in two weeks. We're going to basically do an electronic push first and then sample. And then we're going to, if we have to make phone calls, if you have to, you know, knock on doors, we really want to hear from that community there to be able to bring back to you the recommendation on the programming part of it there. All right, that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So let's say you've got a child who is residential to Louisville Middle, who has made a choice outside of their regular elementary school so that they are, and they want to follow that pattern to another middle school that the child is familiar with, the students with. How, is that possible with choice or can that occur?
All right, so rising sixth graders will have to attend. They can opt as out-of-zone, but they're not in a zone choice. So there's no choices within their zone, their residential. But they can apply out-of-zone to other schools.
So the out-of-zone, what we would usually do as an in-zone choice for that zone would be an out-of-zone transfer, and that would be the process that they would have to take?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am, for those students, exactly.
Okay, good. I just wanted that clarified for us because we have had some questions. And I just wanted to know how to answer that properly.
Absolutely.
And the second question that I would have would be, we also heard, and I think that with following the elementary feeder pattern, we've got some neighborhoods or some streets that are divided. One side of the street goes to one place and one another. Do we, do we have a lot of those? Are there only one or two?
No, ma'am, that was one of the criteria, one of the priorities that the Board chose.
That's what I thought.
And exactly, to respect neighborhoods. You know, contractor oriented, that's basically the bread and butter. So they make sure that neighborhoods are staying together. Of course, there's always going to be, let's move it one neighborhood over. I totally understand that, yes, ma'am, but we don't split it in the middle of the street.
Don't split a street, correct? We don't have any streets like, you know, if she lives on one side of the street and I live on the other, that I'm, you know, going one and she's going the other.
Typically, the way we, it would be just major roads if it was that would go under. Yep, so smaller neighborhoods, smaller streets, we keep the neighborhood together. The lines typically split a street, a major, major road, yes, ma'am.
But a major thoroughfare might be split? Okay. All right, thank you, because I thought that was one of the guiding principles. So thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions for Mr. Attashbar, then we can go to our next and final discussion item, which is the appointment of the new school board member by our General Counsel, Ms. Deion Jenkins.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Intern Superintendent McManus. I just wanted to provide a brief overview of how we got to this point and the process by which the Board utilized to select a replacement for the seat that was vacated by Ms. Barbara Burke, who successfully won her election to the Winston-Salem City Council. Ms. Burke, as you know, is one of the two representatives on this board from District One of our local Board of Education voting districts. Just as a reminder, as I've mentioned before, there is no statutory process for how an individual can be selected to fill a term of the Board that is vacated prior to the expiration of that term. And the statute just requires that whoever that individual is be selected by the remaining members of that Board. This Board locally has said in its policy that one additional criteria is that that individual be from the same political party as the individual who vacated the Board. Additionally, on December 15th of 2020, this Board unanimously approved the additional requirement that that individual also reside in District One. On December 30th, the announcement and invitation to submit interest packets was published online as well as on social media. And applicants were given until Friday, January 15th, to submit their interest packets. After that deadline, those packets were compiled and sent to you all to review. And you were asked to kind of rank them, so to speak, in order of preference in order to narrow down the list and determine the top three candidates for this consideration tonight. So those top three candidates' interest packets are included in assembly for your review. They are Mr. Alex Bohannon, Ameris Carr, and Morticia Parman. This is an opportunity tonight. Since this has to be a public process, the Board cannot discuss the qualifications or information about a potential candidate in a closed session. It has to be, it has to happen in a public session. So this is your opportunity as a Board to engage in additional discussion or deliberation about those three candidates. And then later on, if there's consensus, you will be asked to make a motion to appoint the successful candidate. And so with that brief overview, are there any questions that you have for me? Okay, well, if there are no questions, then I will yield the floor to the Board for further discussion.
Thank you, Deion. And I would just like to start our discussion by thanking on behalf of the Board every person that applied to fill this vacancy. This is a vacancy for the service of our 53,000 students, our, you know, 8,000 approximately staff members. And so it is a very important service to our community. And we just want to make sure that everyone knows that applied, that we are humbled by your sincere interest in serving on behalf of our community. I do think that all of the folk that applied for the position would do our community, you know, great service. You know, every one of you that took the time to apply by way of if this was an election, you being of age and a citizen would allow you to run for this seat. There is no, have better qualifications than anybody else. It's about your commitment and your heart and mind to service this community. I would, you know, specifically like to highlight the community organizations that put forth great effort to organize and to send their recommendation. I know that we have Ms. Val Young, who the group made, you know, some suggestions to us. I know that the Forsyth County Young Democrats made some recommendations. I know that there was a special group of Dems that represent District One that made recommendations. So I do know that this community has been, you know, specifically organized around helping us to get through this process. And I will tell you truly that this Board, you know, although, you know, some challenging at times to, you know, kind of bring in all of this and then come to some final consensus, know that, you know, this is not a perfect way to deal with the issue of when a Board member leaves because it's not an election. It is an appointment. So I will encourage all of you whom have applied for this position that the best way to get up here is to go through the election process. And then the people put you here is not by the appointment of, you know, how many ever people up here. And that's truly the representation that I think every Board member ideally would like to have as we represent our community in that very authentic way. So this is the time for any Board member to address the community of why they support any of the candidates, to put forth their best effort to help us and the community to understand why there is a preference of any of the folk that Ms. Jenkins have presented to us today. And so I will, of course, now start to engage our Board members tonight with some conversation around those whom have been presented. And I hope that the Board will forgive me tonight for taking the lead and starting this conversation because I am a District One representative. And I feel like that I should definitely do my best to try to let this Board know what I think would be a great, who I think would be a great choice for us to move forward. So with that being said, I want this Board to know that I support Ms. Morticia Parman. And I support her because she literally helped every last Democrat that you see on this Board from the last election cycle. She got to know every last one of the Democrats that you see before you tonight during that election cycle. And I say that from the standpoint of her volunteerism to some degree and her commitment to the party to generally, just like her mother, Earlene Parman, to be on hand to support the Democratic Party. And so she authentically got to know each and every Democrat that serves on this Board that you see tonight. I would also like to say that I support Ms. Morticia Parman because she recently, of course, finished her service on the City Council of Winston-Salem. And if you saw the farewell celebration, the City Council members were very proactive about her service. And some of the things that I can recall from that farewell was about her leadership, her ability to work across the aisle, her unselfishness, and her authentic commitment to put before the Council those issues that were pertinent to the community that she was serving. I would also like to add that as she served on City Council, she helped to establish the Cleveland Homes Learning Remote Center, which you all know for right now, the learning remote centers in our communities are one of our greatest assets to help us to bridge the gap with the learning loss, if you will, during this time. So for those families that do not feel comfortable coming into our school, some of them do go to the learning hubs. And I know that she was instrumental because, of course, Cleveland is one of the areas that she represented as City Council. In addition, in order for the remote learning facility to, you know, be an effective site, of course, you know, access to the internet was very important. And she challenged the Housing Authority and the city to make sure that every last housing unit in Cleveland Homes had broadband installation. So, you know, as of, you know, maybe three to four months ago and maybe a little longer, Cleveland Homes did not have full broadband accessibility. But through her leadership to make sure that all children, I think, getting access to sound and basic education, which now we know have to include access to the internet based on COVID. Also, during her time on City Council, one of the other areas of intersection was she and City Councilwoman Annette Cipio sponsored or supported community-led discussions around our juvenile delinquents. And what we know is that that's one of our most underserved populations in our school. And she and Annette Cipio hosted two, maybe two or three, community conversations at the bit. And so we were definitely social distancing in there. But her commitment was around, you know, working with us, former Superintendent Dr. Harriston and inviting me in, hey, how can the city and the state, the county, help with this population of students? Because we don't want them to not have an education because, you know, they have been, you know, unfortunately put in the, in the child delinquent or juvenile home. So I lastly say that, you know, one of the reasons that I truly believe that she is a champion for our community, no matter being on City Council or being on this school Board, some of you may not know that there was definitely challenges as we moved forward with Ashley Elementary School. One of our first challenges was that we did not have the land. And the city had the land to sell to us for Ashley Elementary. And Ms. Parman went to City Council, went before Vivian Burke, God rest her soul, and advocated that you all, that... advocated that you all, that, that City Council, so that's who I mean, you all, she ex-City Council, you all need to sell the land to the schools district so that we can have a new Ashley Elementary School for our children. She made the news the next day. And I said, you know, Ms. Parman, you got, well, you know, I, I said TT because that's how we call her in the community. I said, that took courage to go before Ms. Vivian Burke and encourage her to sell the land so that we could build the new Ashley Elementary School. And as you all know, recently, the board voted to move up the bond, the 2014 bond item of Ashley Elementary School design so that we could get that school designed in 2021 instead of 2024. And those are the reasons that I truly believe that Morticia Parman could serve on this board, work with every last member in a very cooperative, fair-minded way. And I ask that this board consider my advocacy as a District One representative, as someone who lives in District One, and someone that I believe served with you in an authentic way so that you feel comfortable with taking, you know, my recommendation. Thank you. Board Member Mott Singer.
Yes, this is Elizabeth Mott Singer. And I absolutely support Alex Bohannon for this seat for a multiple group of reasons. First and foremost, he has been more committed to coming to board meetings, to committee meetings, to serving our school system in every capacity possible than, than board members for the most part. He has been here at board meetings probably now going on four years. He comes to them, he attends them, he was part of strategic planning. He has looked for every opportunity to serve that he has had, and he has served well. He has brought a great deal to the table. I feel it is very important that Mr. Johnson, who we honored earlier tonight, was an avid and strong supporter of Mr. Bohannon, including with his reputation and with his dollars. So Alex will bring to our board a younger voice, a male voice. He will be a good model for our young boys for something that they can aspire to. And I with whole heart and absolute support would hope that the board will elect Alex Bohannon to serve with us tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Woodbury. And, and I just want to echo everything that you said. First of all, I think, you know, my hats, I, I'm just so grateful for everyone that applied for this position. And I know that every single one of you have the best interest, which is the children in mind. So I just want to thank everyone for that. And, and gosh, I could say something great about every single candidate. And I was especially pleased with the application process because it gave me an opportunity to read what the candidates wrote and just kind of get to know them a little bit through paper. And I actually was able to reach out to a couple of them who I had never met and, you know, got to know them a little bit as well. And I really appreciated them taking the time to talk to me. It's, it's, it's heavy and it's a lot to weigh. And I realize I'm a Democrat, so I'm, you know, part of this, this, this decision-making, I think. I am not in District One, I am at large. And so what I wanted, what I want to say is kind of part of where my thought processes went. I was looking at all the applications. I was very impressed. I, I want to say that as far as the answers of what your top choices are, your credentials, all of that, really, very impressive by everybody. I wanted to point out what Chair Woodbury was saying about, and I do respect, you're from District One and you are the voice of District One on this board, that, that Alex did run and he did come in third. And so that, to me, also says that District One did want you as well. You were behind Chair Woodbury and Mrs. Burke. And also, I want to also say, there's something about putting in the work that you have attended, I think, every single board member, board meeting, committee meeting, ad hoc meetings, strategic planning, just about everywhere I've been, I've seen your face. And that takes a lot of commitment, I think, from a citizen who is not a sitting board member to do that. And, you know, and there's some, something to be said about being all caught up with board business by sitting and, and observing and participating in all the committee meetings. And so it's a really hard choice. And yes, I will say, yes, TT, I was very privileged that she did take me through District One. And she did introduce me to a lot of the great leaders, and I am just so appreciative of that. I really got to know a lot of people with her, you know, with her experience and, and everything that she did. I just so appreciate that. But when I'm weighing, you know, kind of the answers and I'm weighing the participation every meeting, I kind of, I have to yield to Alex. So that's where I am with that.
Any other comments?
I mean, I'll say, obviously, I was kind of hoping, you know, as a Republican member of the board, that we would have a consensus from, from our Democrat colleagues that would make it a little bit easier for us to, to try to weigh in. Because I, I do have a, you know, it's a, it's, we, since my time on the board, we've had to fill three Republican seats. And, you know, it's, I know it's not easy to do that. I also want to thank all of the candidates who, who put their application in. And, and I really do appreciate that. And won't say the same thing that I think other board members have said very, very It is, you know, we have to, have to make a decision. And I think it's, it's, it's not a perfect process because it is an appointment and it's not an election, it's not a vote of the people. And so that's, that's never, that's never easy. And, but I, I will have to say for my, for myself, I do, I do appreciate and will definitely take into account the, the one voice that we have on the board that I feel like was elected by District One, and that is Chair Woodbury. I appreciate Ms. Kaplan and I appreciate Ms. Mott Singer's comments as well. And, and, but, you know, I, that Ms. Mott Singer lives close to me in Walkertown and Ms. Kaplan across the county in, in Lewisville. But I, I believe Ms. Ms. Woodbury does reside in, in that area. And I, I feel like, you know, so, so her, her comments will, will, again, wish it was a unanimous kind of recommendation, but I, I will have to put a little, I think, extra weight to the comments from the District One representative. But again, thank you to all of the candidates.
Yes. Board Member.
First of all, I want to thank everybody that put their name out there. I was appointed my first term, and it was, it was difficult, I'll tell you. It was difficult to sit in the room and to know who was going to vote for me and who wasn't going to vote for me. And, you know, it's, it's so difficult that I sometimes still think about that. It, it's tough. It, it really, really is. So for me to sit up here and for me to say this person, that person, I, I know what it's like. And I know how hard it is. And I just want to say that there's not one of the candidates that put their names out there that wouldn't deserve a spot. Not one. So I don't want anybody out there to think, hey, you know, they voted for such and such or they voted for so and so. Because everybody that got out of their comfort zone and, and came and said, hey, I want to be a part of this because I love kids. And I know that's why you're here, because you love kids. I did get a call from TT. And TT did tell me in detail why she wanted to be a member of this board. I really appreciated that. That meant a lot, a lot to me. And I'm not saying that it was, that I didn't hear from anybody else because I saw others here. I saw others wanting to be a part of what is, is going on up here. So I just want to say, having gone through this, regardless of the outcome, you are real heroes to get up and to come and to say, hey, I want to be a part of this program. The appointment is harder, and I ran too, and thank goodness I was successful running. But let me tell you, the appointment is harder than running. Because you don't know what voters out there voted for you, and you don't know who didn't vote for you. But when you sit in the seat or you're on your computer and you see who raises their hand and who doesn't raise their hand, it's not easy. It, it's just not easy. So I just want to say that I commend everybody that came forward, everybody. And just know that you are heroes of this whole board for getting out of that comfort zone and for saying, I care about these kids. And if you aren't appointed to this position, run. Get out there and put your signs out there and run because you're a special person to be doing what you're doing right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Bremer.
We all know, everyone who pretty much put their name on up, and they are all, were very qualified. And I am very pleased to see who all put their name up. TT Parman has done a great service for the Democratic Party, and I can never, ever say one negative thing about her. She's done a great, great job. But we need to have uniformity in the Democratic Party, and we have not had that in a while. So I agree with Deanna and I agree with Elizabeth. And I'm going to throw my support behind Alex because it's time the Democrats stood together.
I have a question. Are the candidates here? I know Alex is here, but I was just wondering if the other two candidates are here. Okay.
I think Ms. Parman is coming through the.
Is she on the virtual call?
I don't think we'd be able to hear her. I think she would just be, I'm not sure. Okay. I'm not.
Just, just so you know, Ms. Crowley. So two of the three candidates are present, present at this meeting, is that right? Mr. Bohannon and?
It, it appears, it appears so.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and just so, just so everyone knows, I did reach out to each candidate and just let them know that the board will be making a decision tonight and that they're welcome to attend, just as an FYI.
Thank you. I would just like to say that my experience on this board as one of nine women have been very empowering, very challenging. And I hope that our representation as, our representation as leaders whom are women have been very intentional to support girls and other younger women. I would be remiss to say that when I have sometimes heard a man needs to be on the board, oh, that, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I really want to have a hard conversation right now about that. Because I think that we're moving away from that in this country. Who would ever think we would have a Madam Vice President? I don't think that the issue is about gender, it's about the capacity to serve, which I believe is a very whole process that any human being, whether male or female, can come up and do this work. So I hope that as women on this board, we can be very proud women on this board and know that, you know, we lead as well as, you know, men and we are just as capable. And I don't want any of us to ever, ever think that there is, you know, a sense of weakness because you see all women leading. That is so powerful. And I think we are the first all-women board in North Carolina to, to serve. So I think we, we, we made history and we will continue to make history, you know, moving forward just as a collective human being of, of folk, being, being women. So I appreciate, you know, that folk in the community definitely want to see diversity, whether it's, you know, a diverse group of men and women, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, something that truly represents our community and our human family. But I would just caution us around putting one down to elevate the other, that I think we should, you know, be very supportive of women as we take our leadership. Board Member Mott Singer?
I would just, I, yes, this is Elizabeth. I would just like to say that I have been a feminist since I was a child. And so the issue about an all-woman board versus not-all-women board is really not about whether this board values the voices of women. We've got to value the voice of everyone. My concern is who serves our district the best, who has shown the longest, deepest commitment to this school board, who ran for this school board, who had a great deal of support in the community and will continue to have a great deal of support in the community. And again, I do not, you know, wish to demean that any other candidates. I need to be very clear that Alex has shown a level of commitment to serving our district as an unelected person. I'm very interested in what he will do as an elected person. So I think this is critically important that we support the person who has shown as much commitment to this school system over years as any board member and perhaps more so than many of us.
Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer. I, I will, I guess, as we start to wrap up our discussion, I think that this is very proactive, I think, strong dialogue around this process so that you can see real time our deliberation around, you know, this important appointment. And what, what I will say is that when there is, as a matter of fact, conversation around whether it's said on our board or in the community, there is need for a man, then I, I'll take it as it is presented. That does not mean that any one of us That does not mean that any one of us whom feel like we are, you know, very proactive about our womanhood, or you know, reconcile and identify as a feminist, you know, absolutely I respect and expect that of women. I'm just asking us to be very precautious around making statements that, you know, the board could use a man. And I've heard, as a matter of fact, the board needs a man, not necessarily from anyone on this board, but in this community. And I think that is a disservice to young girls and younger women who have the sincere interest to serve. So I'm just, you know, being very transparent and very adamant about where I stand with women can't lead. I think we all, as board members whom are women, believe that we can lead. And I do know that Morticia Parman is a manifestation of leadership as a woman, but most importantly as a human being. And I think that, you know, she learned that earnestly from her mother, whom served, you know, for years, and she being right beside her mother ever since three, serving in this community and serving in organizations to help promote and support our community, particularly in District One. So I know that all of the candidates that have applied to represent District One, they all have, you know, I'm sure, a sincere, equally important narrative about why they should be on this board. I can only support by way of who I know. So this is not against anybody. I'm just advocating on behalf of the person that I know and that I think would, you know, be of great service to this board. But I, you know, again, am very humbled by, I see, I think Mr. Carr is in the room tonight, and we appreciate he coming and being a part of this experience, and we really thank you. So although, did somebody? Oh. Oh, could you raise your hand, Mr. Carr? Ms. Carr, okay. We, listen, we went back and forth about the gender of Amari Carr, and I'll tell you, are we pronouncing your name correctly? I don't mean to go out of protocol, but you're here.
Ameris.
Ameris, okay. Thank you for that clarity. Absolutely. So thank you so much for coming, Ms. Carr, and we appreciate your willingness to put your name in the hat as well. Thank you so much.
Well, if there are no other questions, then this is an item on your action item agenda for later on this evening.
Thank you. So before we go into our action item, I think this would be a good time to kind of do something special that, honestly, forgive me, there was a special recognition zone the front end of our agenda, and I assumed it was only for the, of course, recognition of the counselors and then to remember the life and legacy of Mr. Johnson, who served on our board. But there was another piece that we were supposed to highlight, and that is actually the great news and events that's going on in our district. So right now, we will allow the communications team to showcase the highlights in our district before we go to the action items.
It's School Board Appreciation Month. On behalf of all of us with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, we would like to thank our board members for their service. This community really needed something to come in and be a showpiece.
It's causing the whole campus to get a facelift.
So we're just out here giving a little tour. We wanted the county commissioners and our Board of Education to have an opportunity to come out and see what the 2016 bond project at Easton Elementary School looked like. I know our district is very appreciative of the support of the county commissioners and the Board of Education, in addition to the taxpayers of Forsyth County. They passed this bond in 2016 overwhelmingly, and Easton is one of the projects that were part of that 2016 bond. So what we did at Easton is this campus is full of mobiles and modulars.
Our job was to simply just make those old mobiles and modulars go away.
In addition to that, the cafeteria was undersized, and we wanted to do an expansion or a renovation for that as well. Cafeteria joined to the gymnasium, so we didn't want to touch the cafeteria and not do something to the gymnasium as well. So basically, we did a seventeen classroom addition, two and a half stories.
It is very exciting. The teachers are just now getting to be in the classrooms for the first time. There's not a lot of light that comes in from the outside in a mobile classroom. In those classrooms, there's a whole wall of windows in every classroom. So just the natural light that comes in just makes you feel more open and airy. I think they're going to just be overwhelmed by the newness, by the new-style desks that they have, which are easily moved, and so it's kind of like Christmas morning.
And putting the furniture, putting some new desks and some new chairs, really kind of lets everyone in the school have a little bit of ownership in this project. We've created a new entrance into the campus from Bryson Street, which connects directly to Clements Road.
And the improvements we were able to make out there at the front of the building to separate cars from buses speaks volumes to our focus as a district on school safety and student safety, you know, at the forefront of our minds.
If our community is to be, it's up to you and me. And it takes the county commissioners, and it takes the school board to make sure that our community has the things that they need.
I think it's a matter of trying to achieve the same standards for every child, regardless of where they live. And I think this, it was Easton's turn to kind of have that upgrade.
This has shown, will show the community how much they're cared for, that the school system wants to invest in this community.
No matter what it is, he rolls up his sleeves. Kevin Sherrill is a problem solver, and he does whatever is needed to support students.
We'd like to congratulate Kevin Sherrill, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Assistant Superintendent of Information Technology, for being selected by his peers to represent the Piedmont Triad Region for the North Carolina Technology Director of the Year Award.
This year has been like none other for technology leaders in K-12 education. Seemingly overnight, connectivity, devices, and instructional technology has become the cornerstone of teaching and learning.
I just can't say enough about the partnership that our Instructional Services Department has with Kevin Sherrill and his technology team. They have been absolutely outstanding during a very difficult time this year.
One of the requirements for the award was a video presentation. Kevin visited schools to talk to staff about new technology that is helping teach students.
I not only want to highlight my work as related to this nomination, but also put a spotlight on the technology operation as a whole and showcase how we are working tirelessly to support teaching and learning in the Winston-Salem and Forsyth County schools.
Kevin is now one of eight finalists for the North Carolina Technology Director of the Year Award. The winner will be announced at the annual State Technology Directors' Meeting in March. Win or lose, we are proud of him and his team for everything they provide our schools.
Oh, I've enjoyed every day of it here. Gibson has been a good experience.
She's like the heart of the school. She's the heart of the school.
This is the end of an era.
Ms. Mathis is retired from Gibson Elementary School earlier this month.
This is my second retirement, and I retired from a glane trucking company. After thirty-two years, I realized that my age, it was time for me to retire.
You know, due to COVID and social distancing, we wanted to try to find a unique way to send her off.
Hugs and kisses, I love you.
So we designed a drive-by retirement party for her today, and had a lot of great folks out from her past and all of the staff that's here. I appreciate you, okay? You have a good one, I love you.
I wonder sometimes if I'm the oldest one in the system.
You know, respect the amount of time and effort and dedication she's done at Gibson over the years.
That's my second family, and we were just like a family.
Oh, she is our matriarch. Like she's the glue that keeps this place together. I don't know what we're going to do with the others.
I know I love them. I'll pray for them every night.
We love you.
We love you, we're going to miss you. And I think you can see that by how many people came out. Even Dr. Watts came out.
That was my first principal here at Gibson.
Julian Gibson Elementary School was brand-new, and they chose me to open the school. So I was the first principal in the building. Ms. Mathis was one of the first employees we hired here at Gibson Elementary School. She's been like a grandmother, mother.
I don't worry about what I don't have, I'm thankful for what I do have.
Cheerleader, supporter, nurturer.
Don't take today for granted, and live every day to the fullest.
So just a fantastic lady, fantastic heart.
We couldn't appreciate her more, and we're just proud of her and wanted to send her off in a great fashion today. Great lady, wonderful person. I know this won't be the last time we see her.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the action items. First, consider approval of the high school camera project, Phase One. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If you're on the teams, if you can raise your hand, then we'll, okay, thank you. Motion, any opposed? Yeah, okay, Ms. Bremer, Ms. Mott. Ms. Mott Singer, did you have your hand up?
I'm just going to abstain on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes. The next item is to consider approval of NSITE Human Services. Is there a motion?
Can I make a motion that we table the vote until the work session? I think there were some questions raised by board members, and maybe we can send those questions to the superintendent and make sure that they're answered before we take the vote.
I second that.
Thank you.
Is there a second to, I guess, amend the motion to table it?
I think Ms. Kaplan seconded it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Are there any further questions or discussion? All right. All in favor? The next item is to consider approval of the Orton-Gillingham contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor?
I just hope that this gets available to more schools in the future.
Thank you. Any other further comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The next item is to consider approval of purchase of the Plexiglas barriers. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Board Member Bremer, is that, you're voting to oppose?
I vote to oppose. That's not how recirculated air works.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to consider approval of the middle school redistricting recommendations. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Board Member Bremer, was that you opposing or for?
No, in favor.
In favor, okay. I'm glad I asked, because I think we thought you were opposing that. The next item is to consider approval of the appointment of the new school board member, and I would like to take the privilege of the chair who represent District One to make a motion to approve Ms. Morticia Parman.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? That motion, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to, for Alex Bohannon, for that position.
I would like to second Alex Bohannon.
All in favor? Okay. Yes, yes. The next item is to consider approval of the resolu... No, 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 I'm sorry. Consider approval of the compensation project for the child nutrition teacher assistants. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All of those in favor? Any opposed? The next item is to consider approval of the resolution in favor of increased minimum wage for school employees. Is there a motion? Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Parker, okay. Any further question or discussion? All of those in favor? Any opposed? The next item is to consider approval of the site easement on Ebert Road. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The next item is, did I, we just did the site easement, yes. The, consider approval of the 2016 bond project's schedule modifications.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. The next item is to consider approval of extension of food service management contract, addendum for the summer food service program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The last item or action item is to consider approval of the AIG Advisory Council bylaws. I didn't miss the one before that. Okay, good gracious. We're going to have to start probably double spacing.
There's a line up.
I know. I'm sorry, let me go to L. Consider approval, is there a motion to consider approval of the state facility use survey?
Move approval. Second.
Any question or discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. The next item is to consider, and final item, consider approval of the AIG Advisory Council bylaws. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda items, and is there a motion to consider Items A through E?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If there are no further question or discussion, all those approve? Any opposed? All right. Our next item is the meeting open to the public. At this time, we will open the meeting to those of you, or before we begin, I just really want to say that, you know, we're getting ready to close down our broadcast, and I want to thank the community for watching us tonight. And I want to thank the community for watching us tonight and being a part of our conversation. So I say to you, good night. At this time, we will open the meeting to those of you who have signed up to comment during our op...
Thank you for joining us on Your School Channel, Cable 2.